So are we, are we up on the?
Yes.
Good job, Margaret.
Who's on me?
It's slow.
No, no green lights.
All right, now I have green light. It's 9:00 a.m. We will call the December 6th regular meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Presentations. Building and Development Services, item 1.1. Adopt a proclamation of appreciation which recognizes Building Inspector 3 Jim Santiago upon his retirement from the Trinity County Building Department. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing the retirement of Trinity County Building Department Building Inspector 3 Jim Santiago. Whereas, starting July 1st, 1999, Trinity County hired Jim as the Building Inspector 2 with the Building Department. Jim has had a long career with the Building Department, which has helped and changed multiple people's lives for the better in his time. He started as an inspector and is retiring as the acting building official for the department. And whereas for the past 23 years, Jim has hardly ever taken a vacation, called in sick, or slowed down in any shape or form. His department is his baby and such, as such is flourishing due to the time and care that he has given countless time and time again. And whereas his knowledge and professionalism have been very important asset to this community, he has helped many community members make their dreams come true with building their dream homes and help them through a process that can sometimes be daunting. And whereas Jim has served as a role model, leader, and friend to many coworkers at the highest level in his tenure with Trinity County, he has not only helped his coworkers in their own county roles, but has also helped mold his employees on their journey within their own professional development. He has also helped his employees within their personal lives grow, become professionals, and help them move into amazing careers. And whereas Jim can now wear shorts any time of the year instead of always wearing them, starting the 1st of May and ending the 1st of November, spend time with his grandkids who he loves as his own, go on adventures with his wife, Ray Lynn, who has loved, he has loved and cherished for the past 42 years, manicure his property till the cows come home, and hopefully not purchase a hot tub. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity commends Jim Santiago for his 23 years of dedicated service to the County of Trinity and does hereby wish him the happiest and healthiest retirement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You want to call the rule?
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
I think we should have a picture.
You have speech?
Is he going to speak?
Yep. Oh, no.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk of the Board, item 1.2. Receive an update from U.S. Forest Service Representatives Regarding Matters of Interest in Trinity County.
Good morning. How are all of you today? All right. Get my glasses on so I can see. Um, wanted to start off by explaining how to reschedule our public meetings. I needed to avoid some conflict with public meetings that had already been scheduled with the RCD. You can't compete with the RCD volleyball and football games in a small town. I know enough, know that doesn't work. So I'll get those rescheduled and get them done out in late January. Also, I use that time to draft some proposals for some work we need to get done and to try to pursue some additional funding. I continue to meet with our local partners monthly to collaborate and prioritize and strategize for community protection projects and workloads. I anticipate these meetings to increase to other land managers and other land agencies for coordination for treatments on the landscape. Fire and fuels, and I did email this to you guys again, I'm getting better at that. Fire and fuels, currently we're burning hand piles on Weaver Valley and out in Ackerman. We even had, which is in the Lewiston area, we even had the forest supervisor out here burning piles with us last week, so that was good. We've completed some of our fuel stinning and chipping work. The Carville 11 acres is done, and we're nearly complete with the Guy Covington 22 acres. The South Fork Management Unit is working on the burn plan that should be put together here pretty soon, and we should be out there burning on the South Fork side next week at the latest. They are assisting on the, on the T R M U side with burning. Most of the burning that we'll do on the South Fork side will be in the August fire footprint. Fuels crews will start at the first of the year. Contract is being put together to deal with the fuels that are adjacent to the 16 road. We're gearing up for additional substantial fuels reduction work, leveraging disaster funding to accomplish fuels work. Fall fire hire is wrapping up. I'll let you know how that goes when, when it's all done. We do have a hiring event coming up in February. It'll be in Redding, but it'll be unique for us. It's a direct hire. If people show up with their resumes, we'll be able to just hire them, which is much cleaner than our typical system. Timber, the McFarland Timber Sale is currently being advertised. Petty John near Lewiston will go out in the second quarter. Pilot will be sold in the second quarter, so that's for us is January, February, March. Reforestation work is planned for the spring. Hiring for summer tempers is underway. The River Complex Harvest Operations have been intermittent due to weather. Planning, the Weaverville Community Forest Phase 2 is continuing to move along. I anticipate signing that by the end of the year or first part of January. That will authorize another 4,000 acres of fuels treatment in the Weaverville Community Forest. We're modifying our existing master agreement with the RCD to include planning. This will increase our pace and scale and provide more opportunities for shared stewardship. Sorry if I'm talking too fast. Contracts and agreements are being put into place to collect data for the Big Ranch project. So Jeremy, that'll be in your neck of the woods, Burnt Ranch around to Big Bar and back behind, under the Six Rivers, behind Salier, on that Hennessy Ridge piece of ground. We'll be collecting all the field data for that this summer and starting the planning at the beginning of next fiscal year. I'll be scheduling a meeting with the High and Palm Fire Safe Council to discuss scoping results and treatment options for the High and Palm project. I will resume that planning process at the first of this calendar year. The Bowerman Fuel Breaks scoping will be coming out soon. It's a third-party NIPA. We're working closely with the Watershed Center to help them with the process. Financial, I would like to personally thank the Trinity County Rack for their hard work and diligence. They worked through 15 new proposals and made recommendations to program approximately $610,000. Significant investments are being made to our local partners using disaster supplemental funds the forest has received. These investments include work for surveys, fuels reduction, planning, roadwork, forestry, and fuel support. We're extremely grateful for these partners' investments or planned investments for these local partners of these disaster supplemental funds exceed $5.5 million. Recreation, post-fire restoration work on our trails, over 150 miles of trail work were completed this past field season. We've converted our packers to year-round instead of seasonal to help us facilitate doing some more of that work. We'll also be adding a pack string for the next five years to take on more of our trails work and help support our crews. We are currently advertising, expect to fill very soon Sally Cousins' old position as well as a GS-12 Rec Program Manager to sit over recreation on the whole west side. Customer service, we're actively working to improve our customer service by hiring additional staff at both the Hayfork District Office and the Weaverville District Office. Shared stewardship, collaboration with the Trinity County Collaborative Group continues. We've had several successful field trips. And, and I'm, that, that's going really well. Also, a draft of the Master Good Neighbor Agreement has been, was sent to all of you guys. You should have received that. So once I get your edits back or any changes you may have or edits you have, I'll get that back, make whatever changes, and then route it through the region and get it submitted so we can get that master in place, and then we can do spas off of that. So I did a master, so we had a broad umbrella to work under, and then we can do spas or supplemental project. Anyway, supplemental projects underneath it. So that's it for my briefing. Again, I did send it to your inbox, so you would all have it, because it's getting less brief as every time I come in. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one question. With the proposed timber sales, is there any idea how much revenue that is and where does that revenue go?
The revenue, if the McFarland Timber Sale were to sell, it was predominantly a salvage timber sale. So that would actually go into a trust fund that would be available back onto the forest to do more salvage work in the future.
Within this region, though?
Absolutely, within, on the forest.
Thanks.
Yeah, good question.
I do have a question. I'm not sure if you can answer it, but you definitely need to be a part of the conversation. So I've been coordinating the effort with the Good Neighbor Authority in an effort to try to relieve Letty from that responsibility since her attentions rightly need to be focused some other places. And in a conversation last evening with Director Caucus, his perspective is that it is inappropriate for me to read that document or see those edits, because the board will be voting on this eventually. So the question that I would have is, is it inappropriate for us to read the document ourselves and make edits, or only for me to see the edits of others that they are submitting for consideration? I don't know if you know the answer to that, or if we need to seek. Margaret, could you help?
I'll have to look at it, because I need to figure out the structure, but there, there, the issue I'm assuming is coming forward is that if you're hearing it as the neutral party, then you need to hear it for the first time in this setting. But let me look into it a little bit, because there may be some issues. There may not be some issues with you commenting on it. It may just be you seeing other comments.
Okay.
So let me get in touch.
Thank you.
That'd be great. And if you guys can, as we work through it, if you have a, if we have a task force or however, once we get a structure in place for the agency, we'll have, you know, representatives, obviously I'll be part of that. And then whatever the county comes up with, however, we want to facilitate that interaction, just let me know and we'll get that formalized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we not just form a single board member ad hoc?
So that was exactly what I was going to say. If the board gives you the authorization to act as an ad hoc, then you do have additional abilities to act on behalf of the jurisdiction and therefore have more, view more of the, the documents. So that would be a good suggestion, and it would just require the chairman to appoint you and no one else to protest.
Consider it done.
So we have an ad hoc appointed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. We'll move forward as we have been then.
Perfect.
Okay. I've put a tentative date of, and no one has said it won't work. I've asked for all the comments to be back by December 12th. Because in conversation with Supervisor Berkey, she encouraged expediency in order to get into grants agreements as quickly as possible, so that will be the goal.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you all so much. Unless you have any other questions? I want to, I want to thank you all for your collaboration this calendar year. Wish you all a wonderful holiday season. And just thank you for all that you do on behalf of all of us here in Trinity County. Thank you so much.
Item 1.3. Receive a presentation regarding the data report on children and students in the county of, county from Trinity County Office of Education.
We did send you a copy of that data report electronically, but we are also giving you a physical copy, in case you're like me and like to be able to see things that way as well. It also ended up in the paper with a great article by Josh Cozine, so you may have already some information about it, but we wanted to come in and just give you some of the updates, highlighting some of the updates. As Josh even mentioned, our student enrollment has been dwindling over the years. You know, we have a information from 1996 when there were over 25, excuse me, 2,400 kids, and we're now down to about 1,500. But we do have a larger kindergarten population, so we're hoping that, you know, things will, will be on the upswing. Another thing that, that the state is just now keeping track of is stability rates. And that means how long a student actually stays within one school for the duration of the year. They have to, a school year is approximately 270 calendar days. And the minimum for a student to be considered stable in that district is 245 consecutive calendar days. And we do have, we do have a pretty low stability rate, because we know a lot of kids are coming and going, sometimes between different districts. And remember, we have nine different districts here, so even if they go from Weaverville to Hayfork, that's a move to a different district. I also wanted to point out, so that's on page four, sorry, I should have mentioned where I am. Page five, at the top of the page, we have our foster and homeless youth data. And something I always like to point out is that we actually follow any of our foster youth who started here and ended up in a home somewhere else, because they're still considered our kids. So we, we have a team who goes to the homes, check out things with the foster kids. We, they attend school meetings with the parents and the, and the school district. So they're just like our kids, even if they're in Humboldt County or Shasta County, because we don't have a lot of homes here, foster homes. So it is increasing, but we still do have a lot that are sent to other places. There's more information about that on page five. Students with special needs is another thing I wanted to point out, especially during, we, we believe it's especially during the pandemic when a lot of other districts were not in school. You know, the kids weren't, weren't working in person. We ended up with a lot of kids coming to our county, and a certain significant portion of those kids had special needs. So for years, as long as I've been at the county office, we were always hovering around 12 to 13% special needs kids. And we have jumped to first 17.6, and now we're down just a little bit to 17.1%. So our specialized folks are really busy trying to assess people's needs as they, you know, have come into our districts with IEP's Individual Educational Plans. And they're, they're busy trying to meet all of those needs. I think you're next.
All right. So on page nine, I'm going to talk a little bit about our school readiness data. As you noticed there, it says unfortunately, our county has no countywide data. And I just wanted to let you all know that we have a local childcare planning council, and Jeremy sits on that, and so thanks for your years of service there. And part of that council is to do a needs assessment every five years, and we're in the midst of doing that. And a big part of that is that since we're data deficient with school readiness data, is we are capturing data from our community using a Qualtric software so that we can get some details about our littles in our county. So that should be updated the next time we do this report. On page 10, I wanted to talk a little bit about mental health data. I'm not going to go into the details here, as you can see in the, the description, a qualitative description. But just know that our county office has written several grants, and there are also districts right now that are writing their own grants to increase the mental health services. Trinity Alps Unified School District is looking to increase their psych, psychologists and also social workers. You got Mountain Valley Unified School Districts that are doing the same. And then we've earned several grants. You may have heard of Pathways Grant and other grants. And we provide a mental health clinician at each school in the county, along with wellness liaisons who serve in that capacity. In addition, we do behavior techs who help and behaviorists who can actually go in and analyze behavior and, and set parameters on ways to improve the behavior in the classroom and in the school. Also, on page, let's see, I wanted to highlight one more area. On page 14, the suspension and expulsion data. If you look at the graph, you see that we've actually decreased from the high in 1617. But slightly concerning coming out of the pandemic, you're seeing our suspension rates going up and also our expulsion rates going up from 1920, 2021. That, the, those, there's been a lot of behaviors and a lot of things that the schools are doing. Big help with that has been our sheriff department with the juvenile officer through the Prop 64 grant, Deputy Halsey, who's been helping a lot this year. And Carolyn Atterberry, our intervention officer, who's been a part of us for the last four, five years, or maybe longer. And we're, our administrators are concerned because we know that the grant has, it is expiring this year, and we don't want to go backwards. So our office is here to try to make sure that, that, that those positions continue in the future. And we want to be partners, and before decisions are made to possibly cut that, please include us and involve us. We have, we have some, some grant funds that we might be able to assist with to keep that, those folks going in our schools, because they've been a big part of, of reducing suspensions and expulsions and building those positive relationships with law enforcement. And that's through the probation department, of course. And that's, that's it? You have any questions?
I was just going to say that the last time I did this was in 2017, so we have a little comparison. Then there was sort of this thing called a pandemic and fires, and the next one that I planned didn't get done. So I wanted to get this done before I retire the end of this month, so that we have kind of a baseline for the, for the county office to move forward. But we wanted to share it with you because kids are all of our business, and we want you to know where we're at, at this time. And we hope to continue to improve services and, and make life better for our kids in the future. But if you have any questions, let us know.
Yeah, I have a couple. So in the economic data, was this just pulled off of the state, or does this try to take a look at our, our black market economic data that we have in the county?
This is, and you'll see where the information has come from. Most of the, the information I cited. So it has come off of the, the state and the, and the county breakdown. Let me look for the exact. Yes, you can see there's, I listed several things. A lot of it comes from the Kids Data website that's specific for Trinity County.
Okay.
I don't know if you're familiar with that, but they have a lot of information, economic, health-related, dental. They keep track of a lot of statistics.
Okay. And then more importantly, the, the mental health, which I've always been shocked at our mental health data in this county, and I hope to remain shocked and not become numb to it. But do we compare anywhere the mental health data to substance abuse of any type in this county?
I have not seen those statistics anywhere. I think it would be a really good thing if we did keep track of that. I'm not sure who might.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just something to add to that, we have the, I forget the acronym now. I know the acronym, I forget what it stands for. It's called SBIP.
Yeah.
And there is a needs assessment that is also being conducted at this time by our new program, Special Programs Director. And so hopefully we will have more information about that specific substance abuse and also violence data based on substance abuse.
And it, and it's for all the different districts they're providing that information. So that may give some insight.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations for your retirement and for you taking over the job.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter for a subsequent board agenda. Do you have any public comment?
Back up again. Fabio Robles, Deputy Superintendent, Trinity County Office of Education. I'm here to uh give some commentary around the Canyon Creek Road closure and its impact on the schools. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of our educational partners, Christine Camara, who is the superintendent of Junction City School District. Christine, in addition to her role as superintendent, also serves as the principal, science teacher and special education teacher. She wanted to come and speak to you directly today, but she's in the classroom teaching all day as she is also the main substitute for the, for the school district uh when staff can't make it to school. I was asked to talk about the Canyon Creek slide and the impact it is having on the staff and students of Junction City School. But before I get to that, Christine wanted you all to know uh that she is very grateful for the county road crew that cleared the roads and made it very safe for students, parents and staff during the last snowstorm. Uh, the roads were cleared excellently and Christine, Christine and her staff were very thankful and wanted to give kudos to the County Roads Department for that, for that effort. With that, I bring to you some items that is concerning to the school. The road closure is impacting several stu, staff and several students and their families, not to mention many other community members. What I'm being told is that families are being asked to relocate during the duration of the slide being worked on without a timetable for, for when it will be completed. They are being told it could take weeks or months. This is concerning if true because as we are all aware, there is a housing crisis in our county and there are no places for these families to relocate. Given today's economy, it is also not financially feasible for them to do so either. Additionally, many of these families have farm animals and other animals that would be a burden to relocate. Also, if they relocate, it is likely outside of the county, which would negatively impact enrollment in Junction City School and also Trinity High School. I'm also being told that there is an avenue for vehicles to drive through the slide as this is the route that workers are taking to work on the slide. However, during snowstorms, the recent snowstorm, the road is not being cleared, which is causing further safety concerns for the residents of Canyon Creek. Um, these are some of the concerns that I've been asked to bring to your attention today. And um, I thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact my office or contact Christine Camara directly at Junction City School. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning. Excuse me, just a moment. My name is Connie Corp. My husband's grandparents bought our Grasshopper Flat property in Canyon Creek near Dedrick in nineteen forty eight. I'm sorry, I, I need to read this. The fourth and fifth generations of our family currently live on this property. Our roads are, our roots are deep, just like the rest of the families who live north of the slide at Lizard Point, and we have decades of living in the canyon in Trinity County. We've seen floods, fire and a couple of earthquakes. We take care of our families, our friends, our neighbors, and we are survivors. When the slide first occurred in December of twenty twenty one, we all agreed we could see that it would slide again. It was dangerous then, but we, but no work was done except to make a narrow pass through. We agreed, we assessed the risks and we traveled with caution. Winter road maintenance was performed by the county without any mention of danger to anyone, all last winter. I never saw any warning by the U S Forest Service to wilderness users of the danger. Maybe I missed it. Meanwhile, hundreds have traveled the road to the trails, to the trailhead. On May eighteenth, twenty twenty two, at a transportation meeting at the Straw House, I shared my concern about the slide and whether the upcoming fire season, whether emergency fire equipment would be able to pass through to protect us. I was promised to call. I received nothing. Suddenly it's October and we see that work will begin. The road is closed because now it's dangerous. We're given a schedule of work times and told that though the road is legally closed, we can pass through it at our own risk without fear of tickets, et cetera. The additional slide activity we all thought was coming occurred. It's November now and the winter is coming. More delays, more negotiations, more search for funding. It's eleven months since the slide occurred. Work begins again and with storms coming, we ask about winter road maintenance. We're told no, it's too dangerous. We try coming up with solutions and still no. Now not only do we need to be concerned about the slide, but snow and ice and rocks and trees and debris impede our travel to and from school and work and medical appointments and needed supplies. And then there is a post from DOT that admonishes our travel and suggests we relocate. And still we can't get the road made safe. It's now December, twelve months. Our roots are deep. We're still here. Please do the right thing. Winter road maintenance, our road. No excuses. Relocate rocks, not people. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have Michael McNamara.
Go ahead.
Michael on Zoom.
All right. No one else on Zoom?
No one else on Zoom.
Okay, well, I guess with that, since Michael seem, doesn't seem to be coming up, we will close the public comment and move on to reports and announcements. Item two point one, reports from department heads. Do you have any department heads who would like to report out?
Morning Chair, members of the board. Tim Saxon, Sheriff. Share a couple of things with you today. First off, November sixteenth, the jail opened. Yay. Forty-four inmates were transferred. Does that seem loud to you? Okay, forty-four inmates were transferred without incident from the old jail to the new facility. Uh, we had assistance from the Trinity County Probation Department and from the Trinity County Marshal's Office. Most of these systems at the new facility are functioning properly. Uh, those that weren't are being repaired and we have uh the new online systems coming, uh, coming into play. And that would be the uh, the video uh conferencing systems for the inmates to uh visit uh with family members and whatnot at home, also from their mobile devices and also from uh devices that are contained uh within the lobby of the new jail. Uh, that greatly reduces the need for our staff members to have to actually move inmates to the uh visitation room uh within the jail. So that's been great. Uh, our dispatch system uh is, is working properly and functioning normally. Uh, I have sent um notification to the Board of State and Community Corrections, uh notifying them of the closure of the old jail at one oh one Memorial Drive. Uh, this morning I received um a letter from the Board of Community, uh State and Community Corrections, um where they are, um, they have sent the project scope verification letter indicating that the Trinity County SB eight sixty three jail project uh has now been completed. Uh, and there's a certificate of occupancy that's issued. I have the letter uh approving everything. And um, so that's good to know. Good to have that. I will forward a copy to um CAO Garza uh for, for the files there. And uh, and one of the things that they commented on was um uh, congratulations on the successful completion and occupancy of the project. This is the first SB eight sixty three project fully constructed in the state. So I think again, that's something that we can be proud of here in Trinity County. Let's see, I attended the uh, the Mong New Year Celebration this weekend in Hayfork. Uh, they had representatives from around the state and around the country that were there. It was a great celebration. I was honored to be one of the many guest speakers there. Um, and we had code enforcement officers there to uh mingle in with the community and interact with them and provide information um to the different programs that we have there. Uh, you heard the Office of Education talk about our um juvenile officer that we have in the schools now, Deputy Halsey. Um, we recently, in fact, Friday, we completed the uh grant application through uh, through Prop sixty four, uh through a BSCC grant. It was a, a last minute application. Uh, we had been working with Office of Ed through the county as well, hoping to put together a joint application uh with probation uh and the county and uh for whatever reasons and because of timelines and whatnot, we were unable to actually all get together and complete that. We decided to work with probation to try and get a joint application together uh to continue working with the schools. This is a five-year grant. We were able to complete uh an application, get it submitted squeaky right under the wire uh on Friday. So we'll find out in uh about three or four months whether or not uh we have been accepted for that. It's a five-year grant again. And that would just be for a juvenile officer that we currently have uh and to uh fund the probation uh intervention officer that is currently funded by a tobacco grant uh through the state. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, the last thing I would like to just talk about briefly is uh we were notified last week of the death of uh former member of our department. That would be undersheriff Ken Langston. He passed away last week. Uh, Ken's law enforcement career began with the Paso Robles Police Department in nineteen eighty-five, and he then worked for the Eldorado County Sheriff's Office from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-one. Uh, he left law enforcement for a brief, brief period of time and worked as a contractor in Montana with his dad from ninety-two to nineteen ninety-nine. Ken became a member of the Trinity County Sheriff's Office family. He's a deputy sheriff in nineteen ninety-nine and honorably served our community until he retired in two thousand eight. And between two thousand eight and two thousand ten, he made two trips to Afghanistan to serve as a police advisor with DynCorp International, helping in that country to train their police officers. In two thousand eleven, Sheriff Bruce Haney brought Ken out of retirement to return to Trinity County and serve as undersheriff for three years, three and a half years uh before retiring again. You know, Ken was an avid lifelong boater, fisherman, a meticulous carpenter. He enjoyed spending time on his boat, changing latitude. Cold drinks at the marina, gorgeous sunsets, quality time spent with dear friends, and he endured the occasional hurricane. Ken served as a mentor and facilitator for young people who showed an interest in law enforcement, including some still serving here in Trinity County. Retired undersheriff Ken Langston leaves behind two adult children, a loving family and many friends. Today, an end of watch radio call will be given in his memory. So thank you very much.
Any other department heads?
Good morning. Panos Skokas, Director of Department of Transportation. And I know everybody's anxiously waiting to see what's going on Canyon Creek. I understand the hardships that people are going behind the slide. Uh, I've been in similar situations, not as bad. And not having information or not knowing what's going on, it's always challenging and disheartening. Unfortunately, uh, there is so much we can do as Department of Transportation when it comes to rock slides. We're not trained for that. We don't deal with it every day. So I ask for the expertise of a contractor who does that for a living. They thought that their project would be done on November fourth and they left their equipment just like below the slide because they're still cleaning the debris. Unfortunately, like I said, Mother Nature had other ideas. We've seen the results of uh their first clearing of a slide. As we consulted with more geotechnical engineers, more geologists, we found out that area, it's unstable. It requires a lot more work rather than just scaling the loose rocks. What they plan to do is scale the loose, loose rocks and then drive some anchors inside the slope twenty, thirty, forty, fifty feet, depending what they find as they drill through. Once those anchored, they're going to put a steel cable net to prevent smaller rocks from coming down. Uh, once an area is unstable, we don't know how long it's going to be unstable. They have to lay it back. They have to do all types of work that I'm not familiar with. That's not that I work with every day. On November fourteenth, I came to the board and I asked for permission to see if we can expand the contract to dire construction. And we have a three point nine five million construction contract to complete that work. We issued a notice to proceed a Monday after Thanksgiving for the contractor to start the work. Once a notice to proceed is issued, that portion of the road, it's no longer the county's responsibility. It's the responsibility of the contractor until the work has been completed and then file what is called a notice of completion. A notice to proceed starts the work, notice of completion, we take the work over. Let's put it like you have a ship is coming from China with all kinds of Christmas goods. They have a ship's captain bringing it all the way to the port of Falkland, but they can't come into the port. They have to stop outside of the Golden Gate Bridge. A special pilot is going to come in, take it to the port, make sure it gets unloaded and then takes it back out to see where the regular, regular captain takes over. It's the same thing with construction. Once the notice to proceed is issued, we take our hands off completely. It's that special contractor pilot or whoever is running the con, the construction contract. So any regulations of crossing, not crossing after the contract, the notice to proceed and the contract issued, it's up to the contractor, not to the DOT. As far as DOT is sending drivers to plow snow or do any other maintenance work beyond that slide is going to be up to the advice of the contractor. I cannot ask our people to go through harm's way to plow some roads. If the contractor says it's safe to do so, to go across and come back, then they can go through. If they don't know and they're not sure, I'm an engineer. I know things or I don't know things. When I don't know things, I'm risk averse. I'm not going to take a chance. It's like asking you to go on a plane that has ninety-nine percent chance of landing. I'm not going to get on that plane and I don't think anybody else will. So I can't ask our people to take that chance to go across a slide for safety purposes. Uh, this is a large project. It's going to cost the county at least a million dollars in matching funds. So I did ask uh Senator McGuire and someone at the governor's office to see if they can waive uh the local match. Hopefully they agree with me. They told me this never happened before, but well, slides like that never happened before in a small county. There's a few I can do. Any questions?
Jeremy, your district, why don't you go?
Um, well, I rece, I received my first phone call from a resident um whose insurance has been issued a non-renewal because of the slide. And um, I'm kind of at, at a ends of what to And I'm kind of at ends of what to recommend for residents who don't have anywhere to go. They have nowhere else to go from their homes up there. And I saw in the pictures today, it looked like the contractor has a section of road that's passable. And it says, I believe on the sign, it says, proceed when clear. Is that current?
That's correct. Ashley, would you mind putting the slide presentations on? I prepared a about five or six photograph presentations showing the history of what happened. If we can look at those to give you a better idea of the progress, the one today that I emailed you today. Says Board of Supervisors.
No, my email's not working.
Your email is not working.
Let me try this other cord.
But the sign that says proceed when clear, what's the date of that?
That's the contractor's sign. It's not ours.
Yes.
Remember, the notice to proceed was issued, I think, on November twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
That was put in place after that. Proceed with caution is not something that we would put in because we do not have the knowledge of when rock slides are going to come down.
That's fine, but when's the date of that photo, do you know?
If we can bring them up, we can see the dates. I can't remember the exact date. I think I sent you the list of those photographs last night during my department head reports.
Okay, so it says December second.
Okay.
And so is there a county road closed sign in front of that one or no?
Well, there is a road closed sign that the contractor has to put on because after the notice to proceed, project is no longer the county's. It's the contractors until it is completed.
Okay.
Before the contract started, it was the counties who had to put a sign on warning people or telling them that road is closed. I can't tell them to go one way or the other. The only thing I can say is that the road is unsafe, and that's all we can mark.
So do you know, as of today, is the contractor doing traffic stops and letting people go through? Or is it just that sign and they're doing their work and people are proceeding at their own will?
I think depending on their operations, if rocks are coming down, they are closing the road to make sure that the road is safe. They're allowing the people to go through as it's safe. The people who drive through know more about it than I do. However, yesterday morning, over the weekend, when the contractor went to the site, there were more slides came through that are black, the small path that was in place that they had to clear so people can get through.
Okay.
So the slide is still active, very active.
Okay, thank you.
I have the pictures now.
You have them up? Let's see, could you show that by itself? This is on November thirtieth. As you can tell, the old excavator still is in place, and they're trying to move it. Go to the next one. This is on December first. As you can tell, they cleared a path, a lot less rock in that area, and they're trying to remove the excavator. Here, it looks like they have a clear path open, and they are moving some of that material that slid down with a truck and the old excavator that was damaged, it's in the side. Again, more cleanup operations. And also, as you can tell, the excavator is trying to remove some more loose rocks that they can't get on the top with ropes. And here is the picture or the sign. It says proceed when clear, and that was put in by the contractor. Remember, after November twenty-ninth, the site became the contractor's. It's no longer the county's responsibility. They control everything until it's completed. And is there one more, I believe? And here is the picture from yesterday. It looks like there is a clear path, and the contractor feels safe, so they left the excavator sitting on the top of the rubble.
Again.
Are you done, Jeremy?
Yeah.
So I totally understand what you're saying about the slide, and it looks like they're doing a good job to keep that open for their own use. But I don't quite get the balance of the road, which I don't know how many miles that is, seven miles or whatever, above the canyon, is still our responsibility as a county to maintain that road.
Provided we can get through.
Provided we can get through. I understand that. So is, can we leave a piece of equipment on the other side? And then, so you don't have to run a big piece of equipment through? So somebody can just walk through when it's safe to walk through and do the road?
Well, I don't know if it's safe to walk through. I've not gone that far to say walk through when it's safe because we don't know when it's safe. That question was posed to me by the Junction City Volunteer Fire Chief, and he asked if we can leave it behind the slide so they can use it when needed. They have a fireman in that area, a Caltrans worker, and so forth. I checked with the superintendent, and he says we're down three snow plows, as is now. I can't spare any. That was the response that I had from Mr. Hanover.
So what about a pickup?
Well, again, snow plows, pickups, or anything, I ask for snow plows, anything with a plow in front of it.
I would hate for us to be so risk adverse that within a time period of forty-eight hours that we can't get in there and plow the road. Now, it sounded like Ms. Kamara had said that you did that on the last snowstorm. I don't know, I'm seeing no, but okay. So at some point, we have to take some risks to get up there, it seems to me. And just having absolutely zero risk tolerance of that road, as I see in those pictures, there's rocks that have come down past that slide. There's always some risk driving up Canyon Creek and plowing snow. And I just don't want us to be overly cautious and not do our responsibility.
We'll proceed when it's safe to do so. We'll have the contractor on board until the project is being completed. They'll advise us if it's safe to go across. I can, in good conscience, send someone across that road. It's not safe, and they get hurt. What am I going to tell their family?
Do we have a predicted date of completion?
They're supposed to have a hundred and eighty calendar days for completing it, and that includes some weather dates, meaning that some days that they can't work at all. It takes a long time to get this type of work completed.
So about June or so, somewhere in there?
May, June, depending.
You mentioned twenty to thirty-foot anchors, and we both looked at this, and there's a big crack about a hundred feet back. Is this a temporary fix? Are we going to have to go back and get at this thing again?
I wish I could tell you one way or the other, but according to the contractor, it is supposed to be a permanent fix. What they plan to do is maybe go on the top and put some type of aggregate, some kind of concrete to prevent more water from coming into the rocks. What is happening, the phenomenon I was told about, I didn't know much about it because they don't teach us that in engineering school, unless you specifically specialize in rock repairs. It's called frost wedging. Water comes into the cracks, and it takes about three to six degrees Celsius, which is about seventeen to twenty-six degrees Fahrenheit. When the water freezes, and it has as much pressure as thirty thousand pounds per square inch. The best concrete we have to build bridges, it's about six thousand pounds per square feet. So that's about five times stronger, the pressure on the ice, than it is on the best concrete that we use. So yes, the potential is there. However, they assured me they have done that type of work elsewhere, and that helped because some of those anchors can hold as much as fifteen to twenty thousand pounds per square inch.
Do we get any answer from the Forest Service on the Good Neighbor Authority? Do we get any?
We received some, the Good Neighbor Agreement in the back a few days ago. We're working to make sure that all of our requirements or desires from that agreement are in place. We're trying to still gather some more information from other people.
Does it look like we'll receive any funds from them?
This is before the agreement is in place. I very highly doubt it. However, it's up to the Forest Service. Typically, agreements work from the time you sign it and then, not before. But if that can be included in it and they are agreed to it, I don't see a problem. But they have to agree to it.
My conversation with Rachel Burkey is that, yes, they are concerned as well. They understand the urgency, and they will be looking for funding to assist us. But at this time, they're not able to identify any at this moment. So we will just have to wait and see what we can do.
What was the date of your conversation? Was it before Friday?
Yes.
Okay, I talked to her Friday. And the update at that time was no. But her hope was that once this agreement is in place, that jobs that are done post-agreement signing, money that, excuse me, we would have had to have spent on those, we could, in essence, funnel through our books to kind of recoup, as a thought. I have a question for you when I stop coughing.
Okay.
So Panos, if we do have to pay the million dollars, what does it leave us as a department, road department?
It will eat at least half of our budget or close to it, and that means we have to do less other work.
So roughly, the county, each supervisor district gets about a half a million dollars for road maintenance. So you would cut that down to like three hundred thousand dollars for a year.
From your district also?
Panos, I have a question. If we can look into doing like a MOU with either Caltrans or neighboring county to see if they can lend us an additional snow plow, would that be an avenue we could consider to assist?
It's a potential avenue, yes, if we have enough equipment. At this stage, we're down three pieces of equipment. When I ask for snow plows, I didn't ask for large trucks, things with a blade that they can plow snow.
Okay.
And that's what I was told.
I'll inquire with Humboldt County because they might have some extra resources over there.
That'd be good. Check with Mr. Matson.
Okay, thank you.
So my question will piggyback on Supervisor Brown's. I was wondering if there is any means by which, if you are uncomfortable sending one of our county employees through an area that you are uncertain about, could a piece of equipment that we obtained by whatever means, someone who is able to drive such equipment that lives there, could there be an agreement in place that that individual could then use that equipment and clear the snow?
Again, not part of the county. I lived in Montana for a long time, and we did plow roads. I lived in a ranch. We had large equipment, and the county would not come by for about two or three weeks. And we plowed our own roads, county roads at the time, to get through. And most of the time in eastern Montana was due to snow drifts. There'd be a few drifts. It'd be very, very hard, just like rocks, so you had to make sure you plowed those so no one is going to get hurt. But again, telling someone to do something on county roads and you direct them, we may incur some liability, and I think the county council was getting ready to chime in. So if they want to do it on their own, it's one thing rather than us doing it, but I'll allow the county council to speak on that.
So of course, anything is possible contractually from a liability standpoint. If we are contracting somebody to use our equipment, the liability would remain as if it was one of our employees in terms of if something were to happen to them. So I would be very cautious about that and want to consult with our insurance carrier as well.
What about just getting an MOU with a private person with their own piece of equipment to do that and let them take their own risks? Does the county have the ability to financially to pay that MOU?
So I'll say from that perspective, if we were to do that, it would be important to make sure that the private entity has sufficient insurance to cover any potential damage that's caused. And so I'll take away the humanistic aspect from the legal perspective. That would be a much better solution in terms of coverage for the county. But again, if there's a risk, we still have a potential liability if we have our experts telling us it's a life-threatening concern and we're still allowing people to go through. But with the insurance, it would be a less of a risk.
And again, going back to the risk, Mr. Pence and I met with a contractor, a geotechnical engineer who specializes in rock repairs, and another contractor from Texas. I can't remember who they were, but that's all they do. We asked him, how safe is this road to go through? No one replied to us. Is it safe for us to go once or twice? They just did not reply. They're just quiet. They did not say it's okay to go through. There are times you can go through, nothing, not a word. They didn't want to tell us one way or the other. I haven't seen anything like it before. You ask a question and just theirs.
Well, I will say to shut these people out for a hundred and eighty days is not a solution that I think is viable. I don't know what the solution is. I know what I would do, but I don't live down there with my pieces of equipment.
Panos, do you think you could ask, or someone from the county, we can ask for the contractor to come to the next board meeting and give an update from their perspective?
Yes, according to the contractor, they're supposed to put some type of rock barriers along the way sometime later on in a week or two as they clear the site and remove more of the rocks so they can have a one-lane traffic. And again, this is what they're saying. I think they're saying it would be the second week in December. I can't remember the exact date because even if I did, those things change based on the site conditions. So they will put some type of a rock barrier. It would be some type of a steel container filled with rocks or some type of a rock barrier to allow for one-way traffic, for one-lane traffic. And that's what they're planning to do, part of their work. However, the work is not going to finish for at least a hundred and eighty days. How safe those barriers are, I have no idea, but they claim they're safe.
And they will take the liability once they put them up?
Yes, the contract is theirs until we file the notice of completion, taking the road over from the contractor. Once you give them a notice to proceed, like I said earlier, that side of the road is theirs. Once they complete it, then we take over.
So Supervisor Brown's going to look into whatever he can find out for some help from Humboldt County. But can additional direction be given to staff that whatever avenues of exploration need to be looked at to see what can be done to help with road maintenance on the other side of the slide when additional snow arrives? Can we make sure that we're looking into that?
If the contractor installs that rock fence that they claim they're going to install, that's supposed to have safe travel through one lane, we'll go through.
Okay.
Provided they assure us that it's safe.
Okay.
However, until they come back and tell us that it's safe to go through, we can't go through.
So Panos, would it be a wall or the high-tension wire that we spoke of earlier?
I don't know exactly what the temporary measures are. I know that the permanent measures are steel mesh that's going to be embedded into the rock. There'd be some type of barrier to prevent rocks from coming across.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Chair Supervisors. Drew Plaboni, Environmental Compliance Specialist, Acting Division Director, Cannabis Division. I've got some quick updates for you on division progress. We currently have received three hundred and ninety-eight Appendix C documents. Of those received, we have noticed ninety-nine Appendix C documents in the paper. And of those noticed, we have issued, and there are fifty-two active cultivation licenses. And of those noticed, we have issued, and there are 52 active cultivation licenses. We've continued to make, I think, significant strides in the process over the last several months. And one of the things that I've identified in working through the budgetary constraints is that during budget season, I believe the allocations to the environmental review consultants were reduced in an attempt to, you know, make budget. Given that those are grant funds, my expectation is that for the next Board of Supervisors meeting, I will have some budget adjustment requests for you so that we can continue to front-load and basically have the grant funding available so that we can continue to pay the environmental consultants to facilitate the environmental review. The goal of that being to obviously get through the environmental review of the remaining projects and stay on track to normalize revenues, hopefully by the end of fiscal year 2324.
So in my opinion, we don't have enough to make it for the first half of 2324. Have we made any political outreaches to Senator McGuire's office or Senator Wood's office? And or do, in your opinion, to expand some of that grant monies? Or in your opinion, do you think I'm wrong in that we have enough and we don't need to do that?
I mean, I'm not sure, you know, what you're basing your conclusion in. My opinion is that, you know, the quicker we can continue to move through the environmental review process, that's what's really going to enable the division to regain a normalized fee-based revenue stream. And so rather than putting off the use of funds, it is my opinion that it would be better to utilize the grant funds that we currently have to continue to pay environmental review consultants so that we can ramp up our productivity as opposed to tapering off productivity in an attempt to sort of, you know, hold on to those remaining funds. To my knowledge, no one has reached out to senators and I'd be happy to reach out to them to see, you know, what solutions they might be able to provide. We are currently working on the equity grant and hope to see that submitted probably next week. But yes, I think your concerns are valid. And that, from my perspective, the solution that I can see in front of me is that if we could continue to have funds available for environmental review, then we can ultimately achieve, you know, a functioning program and a normalized revenue stream.
Yes, I didn't mean to say that we should stop spending the money at the pace we are. I'm just putting a warning that if we spend at this pace, we're not going to get to, say, the 300 or 350 that we need since half the monies are already been paid in. So there's going to be a large shortfall and then we don't have cannabis tax to rely on because that's been cut off from us.
I understand your concern. Again, my thought is that, well, I think something that's important to note is that, you know, over the last several months, as we've sort of been working to improve the process and coordinating the environmental review with the consultants, one of the things that we've done is to actually, previously, you know, you could, you might be able to imagine that there were several hundred projects in the queue. And the result of that without clear priorities and performance standards in the contractual agreements with the consultants, there was just this huge basket of projects that they were able to pick and sort through and put down. And we were getting all sorts of billable hours to review projects without a lot of output in terms of, you know, the final product being an approved environmental document. So one of the things that we're doing now is that we are internally sorting all of the projects and giving the consultants projects to review weekly so that we can sort of verify more tightly what they're billing us for and see output on the weekly and just really be able to monitor that trend as opposed to just being, you know, sort of a free-for-all, which it was for the first many months of that engagement with them. So I think the process has been improved because of that. You know, I would say that to date, we've spent in excess of $10,000 per project. You know, 10 to 20,000 even, depending on how you slice the numbers, which is pretty consistent, to my knowledge, with the costs to review environmental documents for additional license types. But going forward, and I think, you know, months ago, when the consultants were here in front of you, they gave you some numbers to the effect of it only takes us six to eight hours to do technical review on these projects. And I've confirmed that with them again. So my expectation going forward is that rather than seeing a bill of, you know, 10 to 20,000 dollars per project, we can really streamline that and have it cost 3 to 4,000, something like that.
And then, thank you. And really quickly, where are we on the retail applications?
The application has been rolled out and to my knowledge, we have received two fully complete applications.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Other department heads?
All right, seeing none.
Report from County Administrative Officer.
Hey, good morning. Due to a recent resignation from our interim HR director, I am having to represent any HR risk management items to the board and also covering the office and all functions of HR risk management along with our rock star, Suzy Hawkins. We created quite a team in our administration office to support Lacy as she is the remaining HR employee. So just want to make sure the board understands the workload that I'll be having until we get some replacements. We are going to be working with the auditor's office and HR to work on updating our salary schedule because as effective January 2023, the minimum wage is increasing to $15.50. So that will be an adjustment that we will be bringing to the board in, before January payroll. I did sign the application for the local agency technical assistance grant that is going to allow Trinity County to expand broadband services to our three underserved communities within Trinity County. And those are the communities of Heimpong, Forest Glen, Post Mountain. And it's outside of the Digital 299 project. So I will keep the board updated on the status of that application, but I'm very proud that our associate planner, Skylar Fisher, was really active in taking the lead of this project and application, gathering the data that we needed to supply. And I appreciate Supervisor Cox and Supervisor Brown's involvement as well. Thank you. I'd like to report that General Services Office has moved to the Loudoun Park building, which was formerly occupied by the lapidary. It was formerly called the lapidary building. So their offices, they're fully operating out of that office now. A solid waste, wanted me to share with you that being that is the Christmas season, they will continue their offering of taking Christmas trees free of charge as long as they have no decorations or tinsel up until January 14. So and if they do come with decorations or tinsel, they would be charged with the regular trash rates, a regular fee. Okay? And I think that's all I have at the moment. Any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Since my wife doesn't take my Christmas tree down until at least Easter, I think I'm out. So District Attorney's Office, we are in, I don't know if crisis is a proper term, but we are definitely overworking our district attorney. And so what is HR has been doing and what are we doing to try to get that staff up? For those that don't know, my understanding is we just have the district attorney and nothing else.
Thank you for asking about that, Supervisor Groves. Yes, I have met our district attorney and we do have some ideas in place to review the salary ranges for the positions of deputy district attorneys. And we do have a possible contract that we could reach out to to assist the DA for some high-level cases that he would appreciate help on. So currently, he has allocated three full-time equivalents of assistant district attorneys. And the DA has requested to reduce that to two so that we could, with the salary savings of the third position, maybe fold into those two positions as well as possibly looking into a fraud investigator because that is another position that is really needed in the DA's office. So we are having conversations. So we hope to bring that to you among some other position changes that I'm working on in the HR department with other departments. So I hope to bring that to you very soon. In fact, after this board meeting today, my focus will be on HR for the rest of this week.
Well, my advice to you is stop doing such a good job at everything because you'll just end up having everybody's job here in no time.
Well, I appreciate that. I couldn't do it without the support of the admin staff. And also, other department heads have offered to assist as well and have sent employees to assist in some projects. So I really appreciate that.
Any other questions for CIA or Bjarne before we move on? All right, moving on to reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Brown, let's start on your end.
I've got no out-of-county travel and Canyon Creek's kind of been the biggest item to report out on. I think that was thoroughly discussed earlier. Other snow removal in Downriver area has been good with our one representative down there. And there were no big tree falls during this last storm that I was made aware of. So that's all.
Supervisor Goget.
I have no out-of-county travel. I was at the, among New Year's on Saturday. My pleasure to speak there. Sheriff Saxon also spoke there. It was a great celebration. And I hope to get invited back next year.
All right. I also have no out-of-county travel and nothing to report out. So Supervisor Cox.
Okay, Friday I did meet, that was my quarterly meeting with Forest Supervisor Burkey. So we've already discussed what she updated me on, on the Good Neighbor Authority. She also gave me a little update on the Minersville Boat Ramp. From the Forest Service end of that project, everything is proceeding. Problem is, in the time that all of the engineering work, planning work delays have taken, costs have gone up, Forest Service is okay with those increased costs, but the Department of Boating and Waterways needs to move their process along to help us timely continue. So her admonition to me was, reach out to them and see if you can burn a little fire under their process and see if we can get that moving forward. And so that's my intention to reach out there. I did attend the CSAC convention with Supervisor Groves. He is our, of course, primary delegate to that, and so I'm sure he'll have many things to share. We've heard Supervisor Groves say many times, as far as our cannabis is concerned, that even though we have been through many challenges, we really are in a position of being ahead of our surrounding counties. And while I've heard that and didn't disbelieve him, it's a whole nother level to be at this convention for a week and watch how many times other supervisors from other counties pinned him down to say, can you please tell us what you did and how you did it? We're struggling. And so I just give that to you and I'm sure that you'll expand upon that. There is much opportunity for a delegate from Trinity County to become a part of legislative committees on many important issues that are coming up. And so I hope that we'll see that in the future. And then I would share that with this. I had shared before about Jason Schwenkler and his partner. What is her name now? Escape me. At the North State Planning and Development Collective through the CalState Chico campus, they have been awarded the conveners of the $5 million planning dollars that will be used for our region. And then subsequently, there will be $500 million implementation dollars. And so we are working very hard to be on top of putting some viable projects together that would stand up to a possible award of some of those funds. We have to be careful because they are looking at things that are shovel-ready. And in order to be in that position, you know, it requires dollars to get there. If we come up with projects that require, you know, NEPA or CEQA, you know. So we're thinking in terms too, it doesn't have to necessarily be something that we build. It can be a project that we undertake. And so we've put together a team of some pretty incredible thinkers to be on top of this. So there will be more information to share as time rolls on. We're in a really good place because they haven't even rolled out all the rules, all the boxes that will need to be checked in order to be in a position to be seriously considered. But I want you to know that we're on it. That'll be the end of my report.
Supervisor Groves.
Yeah, CSAC is, Supervisor, almost called you Congresswoman. I don't know why. Cox was mentioning was, we're finally getting back to normal. And I will freely admit, the last two years Trinity County, I have, through the COVID period, and the whole CSAC has not given the representation that it deserves. There, if my count was right, out of the 58 counties, 12 supervisors are being removed off of the, or leaving the policy and legislative committee. And so 12 out of 58, that leaves a big hole and a lot of potential for whoever's going to sit as the lead in CSAC to get on the policy groups and really make a outstanding attempt to move Trinity County's needs forward. So Ed Valenzuela, which was the Siskiyou County Supervisor, who served as the president of CSAC, which is pretty amazing that we had a neighbor that did a great job. He's being replaced by Chuck Washington, who's the Riverside County Supervisor. And we elected a pretty, for the Rural Council, we elected a really good group of people that I think will represent rural California well. The talk of the day is Governor Newsom is now going to fix homelessness. So that's, that's his main priority for the upcoming year. A lot of these issues and monies, I don't really see that's going to pertain to us, but that's his highest priority. One of the interesting discussions we had was over the fact that now they've mandated electric cars to be here and no gas cars in seven years. How are they going to pay for the roads? And so, thank you, Sheriff, that nodding your head, no way is that going to happen, is kind of what I was doing through the whole meeting. But in their view, it's a done deal. There is no discussion on if we're going to do this. We are doing this and how do we, how do we manage that? And when questioned, how is the grid going to support this? The answer really is, we'll figure that out at a later time. I did point out that Trinity County now with the latest census is around 28% of people off the grid. They were a little shocked by that. They were a little shocked by that. But the good news is if the data is correct, that we will be going to a mileage tax of some sort. And it, they project that people in rural counties with a lot of driving will actually benefit from this. Um, that poorer counties, cars aren't as efficient. Uh, we have old, older people fleet and so there's less gas mileage that we get. And so that the mileage tax that will be put upon us will end up being significantly cheaper than what we pay today. Now they are, I'm sorry Sheriff, I keep looking at you and now you're laughing at me. I, I would love to play poker with you sometime. And, and so the data they do show so far in tests show that that is, that is something that's a better value to the smaller counties, rural counties. They do not know how they're going to implement this yet. Uh, it is, uh, they do have heard very clearly that there's a lot of privacy issues of you being tracked to watch your mileage. Even though most modern cars now can can track you and I'm totally side barring here as my wife told me at the school that the lady came up in her Tesla and it played a Christmas carol and the lights blinked off and on and the windows went up and down, the windshield wipers to the beat of the of the Christmas carol. So electronics have come a long ways. But so that's what they're working on the next step. Uh, how they do that, I think they are delusional. But for, for the needs of our county, but that's what's moving forward. Thank you Supervisor Cox for talking about the cannabis. It was as the as the provisional license are going to go away here in, in 190 days or whatever, there is panic amongst many of the uh, growing counties of how they're going to get state SEQA documents through. And Lake County in particular is, is sees their their industry going to collapse. You know, they're talking about how they get legislative fixed, so they won't have to do that. And I'm sitting there thinking, well, we are doing it and we'll have almost completed that. So tough. But there's not a lot of talk in CSAC about cannabis right now. Uh, I think most people are, are moving forward with what, what's in place and in planning on that. I, I think that's about it. There was a lot of, of meetings and a lot of discussions and I, the I was asked at one of the meetings, you know, as, as retiring out the benefits of, of CSAC and, and a lot of it is just getting to meet other supervisors and realizing your problems. We have the same problems. We, we sit in our little bubbles, sitting in Trinity County, me particularly, and in way up in the north and, and you get overpowered by all these things that are going on, but virtually every county has the same issue. And the same frustration in the constituency. And being able to sit in a, in a room and, and talk with other supervisors is, I don't know if cathartic is the right word, but, but it really allows this idea fest to, to bounce things off. So I, whoever steps on that, I, I hope that they pick up the torch and really move forward and, and be a strong advocate for Trinity County. That's it for CSAC. I do, I'm going to ask a little indulgence from the, from the chair. A little out of my rep, my normal discussion, but I, I have some photographs of, of some forest policy that I think is important for this this group to see. And, and I want this to be taken in two contexts. So we hear from the Forest Service, and I'm sorry that they're still not here. Of, of all the wonderful things they're doing and, and I will admit that compared to where we were five years ago, we have moved forward in great steps. Uh, but as you're going to see that there's miles, I mean, we're taking baby steps and there's miles to move on, on afterburn forestry. And secondly, um, and this is, this is a herbicides is going to be something that's going to come in from this board in the next two years uh, due to the circumstances of what's going on in the county. And we have this fallacy that herbicides aren't used in this county. And, and we're told that, you know, they were used 45, 50 years ago and the deer had two heads and, and there was a huge increase in miscarriages and a lot of negative things. Um, but herbicides are used in actually a large amounts uh, in this county. Uh, we just like to ignore it. So Ashley, go to one. One, uh, that's in the twos. No, back. Back. Back.
That's the only one I forgot.
All right, so you didn't have a group one?
The first two were group one, the second two were group two.
Okay. All right, well, this, this will, so what you're seeing here, and this is sort of my point. Uh, as, as you look off through, this is out of the Delta Burn in Trinity County. As you look out on SPI land, basically as far as you can see, you see no brush uh, zone that's been cleared and Dan has seen miles and miles of this. And you also see planted trees in, in front of you that are, are growing. Go ahead to the next one. So this gives you an example, the, the brush in the middle is a drainage. And this is what this whole mountain would look like without the use of herbicides. So they didn't hit the drainage, but you see uh, the, the use and the lack of, of brush. And if you look really closely, you'll see small trees in there. Go ahead, next. So this is a view of the difference between Forest Service land and that brush within that land. And I'm sorry, I somehow didn't get those pictures in because I'm technologically inept. But that brush within there is about five or six feet tall, as you've seen on the other side. And what you see below is SPI that, that logged it, has sprayed it and planted that. And that is well on the way to being forest land. Again, uh, this brush field becomes highly likely within a 10-year time span to be a reburn and scorched earth. Go ahead, next one. And again, this is a, a picture of the, is you can actually see the dead brush and the trees growing in and of what, what happens in forest management. So this is a question through the T PUDs request or, or in their E I Rs to expand their lines, there's going to be the herbicide question come up. Um, and this board is somehow is going to have to deal with that. And I just put those in your mind to, to remember what private forestry does versus federal forestry. And with that, I'm done. Thank you for your indulgence.
Right. Report from the Cannabis Cultivation Ad hoc. First thing to report out, uh, December 8th, which would be Thursday, uh, will be our last scheduled cannabis ad hoc meeting. Um, I think we're we have a department that's fairly well moving. We're not doing as much as an ad hoc anymore. The, the department is handling things on their own. And that was kind of the idea behind the ad hoc when it started. So this will be our last meeting Thursday and moving forward, I think that the, the board can stand on its own. So Supervisor Groves, do you have anything to add? I think Drew did.
Yeah, I think that
Numbers.
I, I was at CSAC and didn't hear the, the new numbers, but I, I do hope that the board takes a very close look at if the the ordinance side with the new rules being written, uh, you know, may or may not consider uh, an ad hoc to kind of oversee that in a different format, but that will be up to the new board.
All right. Well, before we go into the consent calendar, let's take a five-minute recess. Five minutes, well, maybe four. Be back in three.
No, I lived in England for a year though.
I'll try to get you all.
How's it feel?
It feels like we're going to get more bathroom breaks next year.
Yeah, it'll be scheduled.
Every 30 minutes.
Where are you, sir?
I can feel it already.
As the crowd dwindles here, the zoom builds up.
Oh.
I, I kind of imagined. That was actually one of the questions I had earlier is that I don't know if I've got an answer to is if we have to have four of us vote in them. Four, I'm wondering if we have to have four for that one.
All right, we'll wait a couple more moments for Supervisor Gogan to return. I know it. I, I still have it stolen right here.
He almost made it. I see his head.
The biggest one of the year.
Please. I see his head out there, but it's not.
Hey, Jane Supervisor Gordon, please come to the white courtesy fund.
All right, we will call the December 6 regular meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors back to order. We're moving into the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon by the board by one rule call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item in the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
There are fours in Weaverville. I guess the only question I have is if an item gets pulled, will we have a public comment at that point on that item separately? Okay, thank you. Firstly, I don't care if you pull this or not, but my question is on item 3.10. You're acknowledging the, of the certification of the June 7th and November 8th elections. You said as the Board of Elections, the county Santa, Santa White sits as the election officer. So what you're saying here on this is that you have already certified it. You recorded it with the court clerk's office because it's the clerk office, not the elections office that's bringing this forward. So and my other issue with this is that in 2010, we had 13,786 uh, people in the county with 25 precincts. 2020, we had 16,112 people with only 16 precincts. So how do we go from 25 precincts, gain more people and cut down to 16 precincts? I have personally and other people have asked to see the precinct maps and they have never been provided. And my other issue with this is that she states very plainly that this is, that the And my other issue with this is that she states very plainly that this is that the one percent is done by a random count. And I have watched the elections since two thousand ten and I can't tell you how many times Heimpong has been the the one percent. Precinct and here both of these elections were done with the one percent and in Heimpong. So she's even saying that she's this random thing is really not random. So I don't know, I don't know what you guys want to do about this, but I know that you as the election board have not certified this.
Any other public comment on the consent calendar?
I have no chats or raised hands.
All right, that will close public comment, bring it back to the board, any request to pull any items?
Yes, sir. Three, 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 four, and three point one zero.
Okay.
I would like to pull three point two, three point eleven.
Three, three, four.
Three point two, three point eleven.
I'll go ahead and pull the balance.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to. I request. Okay, so we have three, two, three, 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 four, three, ten, three, eleven, any others that. Saying none. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move to approve the adjustments.
Okay.
Supervisor Brown.
I.
Supervisor Gross.
I.
Supervisor Cox.
I.
Supervisor Gogan.
I.
Chairman Frazier.
I. All right, item three point two. Approve amendment number five to the agreement with Clifton Larson Allen LLC to update exhibit B one and increase the cost to seven hundred thirty five thousand four hundred sixty five dollars to provide audits. And issue the required reports. Additional twenty thousand for a maximum of seven hundred thirty five thousand four hundred sixty five to the county. Supervisor Cox.
Okay, thank you, you learn a lot when you make mistakes. So I made several yesterday by sending a request for information to. The sheriff's office and incorrectly describing which item I wanted to look at. And what, but the mistake was good after poor Sheriff Saxon and his administrative officer, sweet Mrs. Treese, probably. Had something calming. What this really is, is that there is. An audit that's required because of our jail facility and that we can't get out of, but it's twenty thousand dollars that we didn't plan on. But what I learned in discussing this with our auditor is that there is a different fund, fund number five eighty one, that is the county criminal justice facility construction fund. Which currently has a balance of eighty one thousand three hundred and two dollars and ninety six cents. And my request would be that we specify that the twenty thousand dollars needed for this audit we didn't expect. Comes out of this fund rather than the contingency fund because this can be done and many things can only come out of contingency if needed.
All right, do we have any public comment on item three point two? Saying none, all right. Public comment, bring it back to the board.
So I would move that we specify that the twenty thousand needed come from fund five eighty one rather than contingency.
Have a motion.
I'll I'll second for discussion.
All right, motion and second, further discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the auditor. On this issue.
Do we have the auditor online?
Christine, are you available?
Yes. Good morning. Fund five eighty one, I'm gonna have to look into that fund as. To my understanding, it was supposed to be fund one forty three. So I don't know if. There was a misinformation there between. The auditor and myself, but to my understanding, it was supposed to be one forty three, which eventually would have been ended up being covered by the discretionary funds. So I'll have to clarify that.
And Angie's not here, she's the one to get the email from.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that email, so as far as I know, I don't see her on here, no.
Hmm.
Okay.
And is she available?
I would have a question. How about the time sensitivity of this this item, do we have to have this done today? Supervisor Cox.
I don't know, Christine, do you know the answer to that?
Well, let me see, let me look at their payment schedule here when I believe this audit for the new jail part is going to be. For this current fiscal year and twenty two, twenty three, it is not going to be billed out for the audit of last fiscal year, so I do believe we have some time. On approving this amendment.
Right, I would make a competing motion then that we take the time to figure out the proper fund to bring this out of and and bring this back at the December twentieth board meeting.
Second. Christine, I just forwarded Angie's email to you.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And did you second that motion Supervisor Cox, all right. Have a motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none.
Hey, so the motion is to find the proper fund for funding this amendment number five.
It's a motion to continue to the next meeting to come back with the proper fund. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman Frazier.
I.
Supervisor Cox.
I.
Supervisor Gross.
I.
Supervisor Gogan.
I.
Supervisor Brown.
I.
All right. Item three point three. Authorize the chairman to sign a letter supporting Fish and Wildlife Commission's opposition to the Delta Tunnel project. Okay, no fiscal impact, do we have any public comment on? Item three point three.
I have no chats nor raised hands.
Right Supervisor Grove.
Yeah, my, I I'm not against the the letter of opposition, but in the letter. I I don't like it when we don't really tell the truth. And I think that just makes us look. A little reactionary, so in the. Third paragraph in the letter, it says every year we have to fight to send enough water down the Trinity River to prefer to preserve our salmon and trout habitat. Our concern is that downstate customers will pressure water authorities to divert additional flows from the Trinity to Sacramento to replace the Delta Tunnel. Delta Tunnel down drawdowns. We don't have to fight for water every year, this is a. Record of decision, the amount of water has been specified for over twenty years. I I think when we say things like that, that just leaves somebody to kind of poo poo our ideas. So I I'm not a fan of that. And I'm not sure. Well, anyway, that's that's my statement.
All right, so would you care to make any a motion to go along with your statement?
Yeah, my motion would be that we send it back and get it rewritten so we can then. See it at the next meeting.
So Pete, would you be all right to just drop that paragraph and go with it?
But can you, will you second that motion for discussion before we start discussion?
Yes, I will second.
All right.
Yeah, to answer your question, if you just dropped that paragraph and went on on is, I would I would vote yes.
Be happy with that.
All right, so would someone care to make a motion to amend the letter?
Motion to amend the letter.
And explain what you want to amend.
I want to take out paragraph number three that starts with every year. And that finishes with fish population. So instead of it being a four paragraph. Letter, it would be a three paragraph letter.
All right, so.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, second.
And just to clarify, it's a motion to authorize the chairman to sign a letter to support as amended.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none.
So the motion is to amend the letter to take out paragraph three and approve chairman to sign the amended letter.
Yes.
Supervisor Gross.
I.
Supervisor Gogan.
I.
Supervisor Cox.
I.
Supervisor Brown.
I.
Chairman Frazier.
Hi. All right, item three point four. Authorize the chairman to sign a letter supporting Trinity High School's request for funding an all weather track. Do we have any public comment on item three point four?
I have no chats and no raised hands.
Right, let that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I got a raised.
A late raised hand, all right, we'll go ahead.
Veronica Kelly.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Sorry, I had to unmute, thank you, this is Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City and Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Rec. I know the pride that our county has in all of our youth athletes and Joanne Harper, Jamie Green, Bob Jean Gerard, and all of the amazing. People that have been involved in finding ways to upgrade our athletic facilities are doing a tremendous job and they need the support of the county. I think as you have seen over the last several years, our Trinity County athletes have continued to excel and become known and. Trinity County is getting known as a place for athletics and youth athletics specifically. To be able to bring more of that opportunity to our youth and our community. This all weather track that would be if we could get that would just do amazing things, not just for the kids, but the community as a whole. Because it is something that the whole community would be able to utilize for health and welfare as well as our our students. So I encourage you to support this effort in any and all ways possible, thank you for listening.
Thank you, any other public comment?
Steve, so.
Hi, Steve Lyon Junction City, I hundred percent support that we allocate some funds for an all weather track, Trinity County, Trinity High School is the only. Track facility in our comparable schools, like whenever we travel around to other schools, other track meets, everybody else has beautiful tracks. The only problem I see is how do we keep that awesome tradition of the horses riding around? Hopefully somebody has a a plan for how to deal with that, but I do hope we get an awesome track facility so we can start hosting track meets, there was a wrestling tournament at the new gym last weekend, that was awesome. And Trinity High School hosting track meets would be equally awesome, thank you.
I have no more raised hands.
All right, with that, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the board Supervisor Groves.
Yeah, so I I didn't mean to get this into a big debate over the track. You know, I'll be the grumpy old guy who was good enough for me forty five years ago, no, all this is is in the first paragraph. And the last sentence, we say the funding of all weather track at Trinity High School as requested by cross county and track and field coach. Joanne Harper, it would be cross country and track and field coach, that's all I. Change there. So with that, I would make a motion to.
If you're going to amend that, why don't you put a comma after coach and have it be grammatically correct?
Okay, so. Put that.
Yes. As as she said, as amended. Motion to. Authorize the chair to sign this letter as amended.
All right, and do we have a second?
I would second.
All right, motion and a second, any further discussion? Saying none.
Motion to authorize chairman to sign the letter as amended with the correction of. County to.
Country.
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 And a comma after coach.
Yes.
Supervisor Groves.
I.
Supervisor Gogan.
I.
Supervisor Cox.
I.
Supervisor Brown.
I.
Chairman Frazier.
I. All right, moving on. Clerk, recorder, assessor, item three point one zero. Oh, acknowledged. Did you pull this just so I had to read this whole thing? Acknowledged the received certification of June seventh, twenty twenty two statewide direct primary election completed on June twentieth, twenty twenty two. And the certification of the November eighth, twenty twenty two statewide general election completed on November seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Showing the following local results and direct the clerk to let the record show that the cumulative results report and precincts results report are hereby attached and made a part of the minutes of the board of supervisors. Utter to controller Angela C. Bickel, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Board supervisors district one, Richard Wilder, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Board supervisors district four, Heidi Carpenter Harris, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Clerk, recorder, assessor, Shannon S. White, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. District attorney David M. Brady, June seventh, twenty twenty two election, sheriff coroner Timothy D. Saxon, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Superior Court Judge Michael B. Harper, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Superintendent of Schools Fabio Robles. June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Treasurer, tax collector Terry L. McBreyer, June seventh, twenty twenty two election. Trinity PUD, Michael D. Rourke and Nick Colette, November eighth, twenty twenty two election, Major L. Failed, November eighth, twenty twenty two election, no fiscal impact. Do we have any public comment on item three point one zero?
I have no chats, no raised hands.
All right, seeing none in the room, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board Supervisor Groves.
Yeah, so I. I don't know if this is a question for Shannon or or Margaret. But we've had this question come up several times before and I think it's good for the public to to hear. The explanation of of why we're acknowledging it and not. Certifying it. Margaret, do you want to take a stab at it?
Sure. Sure, happy to do so, our election official is declared under the election code, it's election code fifteen three seventy two. And that is Ms. White, so she has the authority and authorization to certify the election. What is happening is is being brought forward to view not for approval or certification, but for acknowledgement, so essentially this is a publication of it. As a result, it becomes part of our minutes and then therefore goes into our permanent record, so that's why it's being brought forward today, but she has the independent authority. In order to certify it and she has done so, she has to do it within twenty eight days of the election, she has done so and so we're here today, we're just to review it and make it part of our minutes.
So if if we chose to attempt to override the certification, we do not have the authority to do so.
You would not be able to do so.
So there's no recount for district four?
There is no recount for district four.
Okay, that was my only question.
Hi Keith, this is Shannon White.
Yes, Shannon.
I would like to also add that, you know, there there's been comments that the board is the board of elections. There's government code two six eight zero two that identifies the duties of the county clerk and the duties of the county clerk. Are to register voters and do all the duties required by election code, so therefore that gives me the county clerk the authority to certify the election. And it's not the board of supervisors as been told in in many, many past elections, whenever we bring this item forward. Just wanted to add that for clarification.
Thank you, Shannon. So I I just wanted to bring this forward so we publicly clear the air and with that I would move to. Or yeah, move to adopt three point one as presented.
Three point one zero.
One zero, yes, thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none.
Supervisor Cox.
I.
Supervisor Gross.
I.
Supervisor Gogan.
I.
Supervisor Brown.
I.
Chairman Frazier.
I. Okay, county, oh, item three point one one, county administrative office, three point one one, approve an agreement with Trinity County Visitors and Development Bureau. one one, approve an agreement with Trinity County Visitors and Development Bureau, Trinity County Historical Society, Trinity County Arts Council, Weaverville Chamber of Commerce, Hayford Chamber of Commerce, Humboldt Trinity Recreation Alliance, and Trinity County Information Services to promote and advertise Trinity County as a tourist destination. Seventy thousand dollars from general fund. Do we have any public comment on item three point one one?
And Darrell Forson Weaverville, I guess representing the Trinity County Historical Society. Basically, at this point, I'm thinking there may be a lot of discussion or possible discussion about how these monies are distributed over time, but I think from the standpoint of where we're at in time, when the budget was approved at seventy thousand dollars for that, uh, most of us would have taken the position that that means the same as last year, so that the contract would be the same as last year, which is what it is. We are halfway through that year. So I believe that the contract as is presented should be approved as that and then with some discussion about how those monies are distributed over time into the future, not necessarily with, at this particular point in time. Thank you.
Any other?
Tekla Johnson.
Hi, thank you. Um, Tekla Johnson, I'm a Weaverville resident. Um, I wanted to back up some things that Darrow said, agreed that we should, you know, um, go ahead with the budget. Um, I think a lot of organizations are counting on the funds as they currently are, um, and I also wanted to acknowledge, um, the Trinity County Chamber and some good work that they're doing and propose that in the future we look at cutting them into the TOT funds. Um, they're doing a lot to market for the entire county. They are trying to hire for someone to be able to coordinate and, uh, market some of their work, um, while things might need to stay the same so that some of the organizations can continue with the projects, checks that they're working on. I'd really advocate that going forward, we look at some kind of a new process so that, um, there can be increased collaboration, uh, among the entities that currently receive the TOT. Um, I think that how things are currently operating, I think there could be a better way forward, um, uh, and, and maybe a missed opportunity for some increased collaboration. Um, I think that our entities currently as they exist operate, um, a lot on their own and, um, figuring out how we could potentially consolidate some of those funds, um, might be a decent path forward. Thank you.
Chris Williams.
Hello, this is Chris Williams, Weaverville. I just want to echo everything that, um, Tekla just said, as well as Darrow, I think that we should leave it maybe this year, uh, as it is and how it's been allocated, but I would like kind of with the caveat, or maybe we could think about, um, bringing in and re, kind of, I guess calibrating how these funds are dispersed and who is, uh, getting them, and I'm hoping that this is so that we can kind of go towards a, a future on, I guess, just redistributing these funds in a way that is meaningful and in a way that really can truly bolster, uh, Trinity County. Um, so I would love maybe to continue this discussion and see if we can, you know, add a new recipient, um, which I would love to see the Trinity Chamber, um, back in, um, on TOT funds, so it's just my, my opinion, thanks.
Carla Avila.
Good morning, this is Carla Avila from Hyam Palm, Executive Director of Trinity County Arts Council, one of the TOT recipients. First, I just want to extend our gratitude to the board for continuing the funding. We have made, um, enormous efforts as the TOT marketing group to better collaborate and solidify a joint marketing plan that is effective, uh, for the county and for the future of tourism in Trinity County. So, uh, I do hope that you will, um, you know, move forward with this funding. I agree that, um, my, my organization agrees that, uh, it would be great to consider discussions of, uh, the Trinity County Chamber coming back into the TOT group and also, as has been previously mentioned, uh, continuing the discussion of how we can best be most effective as the TOT marketing group and as, um, all the organizations that do contribute to tourism in Trinity County. It does seem that there could be a great use of, um, establishing some sort of a more centralized or just designated entity that is funded, uh, specifically for tourism and, uh, that could act as a more centralized role for tourism in Trinity County. So I do hope that we can continue those discussions as we move into looking at what the future may hold. I think we can be more effective and I think that we can raise more, uh, funds overall and revenue for the county, um, be more effective. So I hope we can continue those important TOT group discussions with the county and greatly appreciate all the effort made on tourism. Thank you.
I have no new chats, no raised hands.
All right, and seeing that in the room, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Cox.
Thank you. Um, I did want to pull this item just for the reasons that have been expressed, not necessarily to say that we should change anything at this point. Certainly agree that people are, you know, halfway through a budget cycle where expectations were already in place and, um, some of those expectations include the fact that they have to, um, make, uh, contract purchases for different, uh, advertising media. Having done that, they're expecting reimbursement, uh, to come through and I'm certainly not, suggesting that we should change that course and make such a, a large, a negative impact on those groups. However, um, I would very much like, with whatever, um, path is the best, to open conversations in the future, that we, um, have, uh, first of all, I think a discussion about, uh, removing the historical society from this, they are, uh, they're different. They have a contract that requires that the county provide funding for reasons that we can talk about at another time, but I think it puts a wrong picture in our mind that the county is spending seventy thousand dollars a year to market Trinity County when some of that funding is for a very specified and different purpose and subtracting that out so that we can see really it's just maybe a little bit north of thirty thousand that we're spending, um, gives us a, a clearer picture of reality. And then, um, really applaud the, the work of those groups that have, um, made every effort to start really collaborating with each other so that we get the, the greatest efficacy back from the funds that we do spend. And I would like to see, um, us encourage, you know, more of that. Um, so to understand how, I, I have my fingers on the pulse of how some of that money, you know, has been spent and what kind of return on investment, not all of it. So I don't know how we open that conversation for the future, if that's something that we, um, a picture that I would, uh, make a motion on this item as it is today with some kind of a caveat that we open the discussion in the future, but I need a little bit of guidance.
May I throw some historical context into this?
Please.
So it, some point in the past, uh, during, uh, CAO Coons Realm Art, her contract had run out where if, and Darrell, don't throw things at me if I'm totally wrong, but, um, we gave a percentage of TOT, um, and as that contract ran out, uh, there was discussions that we would just give the same amount of money and then go into discussions and, um, reset this program and, and work with what you're describing. And basically, I, I'm not sure why that collapsed, that it just got to be, we just set a same amount, uh, of, of dollars out of that, no matter what the TOT is. I would like us, i- if we go even farther back, they used to come here and each one would fight over, arm wrestle over what the county gave and at some point, we consolidated them together and just gave a lump sum for them to kind of, uh, work with amongst themselves. But, uh, I would like to see this reset, uh, and maybe revisioned. Uh, also, I would like to see us go back to a, uh, a point where they get a piece of the pie, a percentage of the pie, giving incentive to the, the more people they bring in the county, the more TOT money spent, the more that they get out of that. And then the other issue that we used to get is we used to get an update year annually on, on what they were working on and, uh, with, uh, how that money was being spent. So I would like to see all those things kind of restated, but if you mind, I'll make a motion that, that we, um, approve this and then direct the CAO to re-enter in those negotiations of, or CAO or who she chooses to, um, relook at how this money is, how we want to allocate it and if we want to give a percentage of TOT and get in a true agreement, if that made any sense to anybody.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further, uh, further discussion?
Yes, the Trinity County Chamber, um, be working with the Bureau of Visitors Development Bureau, who is currently, um, not, is currently not getting the funds that did go to Trinity County Chamber. Have those, since the chamber is not getting the money, should we have those two entities work together?
I think that would be a portion of a, a future discussion.
So that would be part of Keith's motion then?
Mm-hmm.
To widen that up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. I'm seeing any further discussion. Go ahead, call for the vote.
My motion is to approve and direct CAO to renegotiate how money is allocated for TOT.
How and who?
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Frazier.
Aye. All right. Moving on to public hearings. Building and Development Services, item four point one, conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions regarding the establishment of County Code Section fifteen point two six, electric vehicle charging station permit expediting. One, find the adoption and implementation of this ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section fifteen oh six one B three, the common sense exemption, which applies to projects where the activity will not result in a significant effect on the environment. Two, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance establishing Trinity County Code Section fifteen point two six regarding electric vehicle charging station permit expediting. Unknown fiscal impact. Skylar, I believe this is you.
Hello, thank you Chair, Supervisors, um, and members of the public. This is Skylar Fisher, Associate Planner with the Planning Department. I'm going to speak to this item. So, uh, this was brought to our attention, um, by the state as there is, um, let me find the exact Assembly Bill, Assembly Bill one, two, three, six, and nine seventy, which, uh, requires cities and counties to adopt streamlined permitting procedures for electric vehicle charging stations. So part of that is there was already prepared, um, like a template ordinance and, um, a checklist for, um, which shows that the county or city or whatever jurisdiction is committed to, um, expediting the review of these electric vehicle charging stations, which is definitely a mouthful of an ordinance, but, um, so that's what we did. So we worked with, um, GO Biz, which is the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development and, uh, Rural County Representatives of California, to, um, review our draft, uh, checklist and ordinance to make sure that it was consistent with, um, what the state was looking for, to make sure that we were compliant. Um, and attached to this discussion item is the draft ordinance and I also attached the checklist, so you kind of knew what that looked like. And so this doesn't, um, create the procedure for, like if somebody was interested in like submitting a, uh, an application for an electric vehicle charging station, um, that's already something, to my understanding, that already exists and this wouldn't change the fees that are charged or anything like that. This is just the commitment and it's in the fourth whereas within the draft ordinance, um, GO Biz requested, they said, "Oh, the ordinance looks great, but if you could add this block of text, um, to it as well to show what specifically the requirements are, um, for reviewing the application, um, how quick to determine it's complete and then how quick to, um, deem it approved." So, um, so that was added. Um, in addition to the template that was provided by the state, um, there was an additional addition that was suggested by the Department of Transportation, which was in fifteen point, would, it would be fifteen point twenty-six point six O E, um, which states that the charging station may be allowed within ten feet of the travelway of any publicly maintained road, only with the approval of the agency responsible for the maintenance of the road, um, require an encroachment permit to be obtained from the responsible agency prior to installation within a public right-of-way and, um, that any charging station cannot restrict, um, ADA access. So other than that, um, this ordinance is essentially the same as the template that was provided to us, um, as well as the checklist, which I was in communication with the building department, um, when we were preparing this item to go before you, and I said, "Hey, this is going to go before the board really soon. Um, do you have any concerns? Are you worried about anything?" They're like, "Oh, no, we're not worried about, um, the timeline and as soon as it's approved, we will put the checklist up on our website, we're ready to do so." So, um, everything seems to be good on that front as well. So all of those things considered, um, the staff recommendation, um, is that the board, um, find this action to be, um, exempt from SEQA per Section fifteen oh six one B three and introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance establishing the Trinity County Code Section fifteen point twenty-six regarding electric vehicle charging station permit expediting. Thank you, and I can answer any questions.
Anyone have any technical questions for other, before we open the public comment?
I do.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate. If I start into this and it's an inappropriate time, you can stop me. Um, but I received, um, a, a comment from somebody who can't be here for public comment today, and I'm not sure if what you just described means that this doesn't apply or we should consider it. So I'm going to read this and you tell me. Uh, he writes, "It would be incredibly helpful to integrate a permit application for an electrical service panel into the car charger application. The way the application and ordinance are written now, someone would need a separate electrical hookup permit before PUD would connect the meter. I imagine that many of the car chargers that will be installed in the county for commercial use in the future will probably be standalone chargers that will need their own electrical hookup from PUD, so having that permit already taken care of along with the car charger permit will be helpful to streamline things further." Is that something that fits what we need to accomplish today or something that you picture doesn't?
So I can see where that would fit into like the checklist and like the new permit application that we're needing to put up, but I'm not sure how that would fit and how the building department processes their permit applications, like if they would need that, because it sounds like currently it's like two separate processes and that's like the concern, like, okay, let's put it into one. But I don't know if I were to say, "Oh, yeah, let's, let's, you know, recommend, we amend the application to include that." I don't know if that would disrupt how the building department is currently processing both of those two things.
So is that something then that if we go ahead and pass this today as is, could be looked at in the future and then combined if needed? Or if that is found to be something that would streamline a process?
I believe so.
Okay. Then I'll forward this comment to you for further consideration, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Any further technical questions? All right.
Oh, I have one, uh, correction. There's a, when it comes to that point, maybe that comes at the point of the motion.
Yeah, that, that would come at motion time. Thank you. All right, with that. Do you have a question or a comment?
I have a question, what if we say no?
Then we will not be in state. Then we will not be in state compliance.
And the ramifications of that are?
Counsel?
So it's somewhat unknown. We have to see what the state does, but they have the ability to enforce it against us.
And what would that look like? Is that a monetary?
Yeah, they, they have the ability to do monetary sanctions. They have the ability to do forced compliance. There's a number of different mechanisms they can utilize. I don't have any indication of what they're intending to do on this piece of legislation. So it's, it's a
So does, Counselor, does this county have or have not the ability to do their own land use under the state constitution?
They do.
Does the state have the ability to overturn the ability of the county to do that without, without changing the constitution?
Uh, so, no, they don't have the ability to, to force us, the county, to, to do land use. But they do have the ability to modify legislation, such as they're telling me to do here, to usurp certain authorities from the county. It's a pretty fuzzy slash gray area. But you're right. I, I know you're asking kind of more illustrative purposes, and you are correct that that is something that is the jurisdiction of the counties, by and large.
I'll save the rest of my comments later.
All right. With that, we will open the public hearing on item four point one. Do you have any public comment?
I have no raised hands and no chimes.
Seeing none in the room, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to decline four point one as presented.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to deny, and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to go on a little bit of a tirade. First off, I find this offensive from the state to do this. This is a county that in nineteen ninety-two was destroyed by NEPA, economically and environmentally. We also can move forward, and we have a cannabis economy here that in some cases are having to do sequas on large vegetable gardens. The state put that on us. The state turned around and turned their back on us when it came to SEQA, and would not give us any protection in the SEQA. Now the state finds a project that they like, and they say, oh, by the way, you guys are going to waive SEQA. And I find that offensive, that they come in and say, well, this is a project that we think is important. We didn't care about you guys previously. But now that SEQA thing doesn't really matter to us anymore, because this is what we want. I find that just well, I can't use polite words to find what I find out. Secondly, they send this thing down for us to look at. The whereas is that we're going to facilitate convenient charging to help reduce the county's reliance on environmentally damaging fossil fuels. Well, again, this falls back to, I believe the number is eighty-five percent of our grid in the state of California is using fossil fuels. And they have no plan, and so they just make this stuff up, shove it down our throats, and, and tell us how to do land use. And that's my get along opinion.
Any further, further discussion? I but
Just to provide some comments on the other side of that. This is an opportunity to attract those individuals who chose, who choose to have an electric vehicle to, who pass through our county to have the opportunity to stop here in our county and hopefully provide some economy. So I believe this is an effort for the state to provide our county the opportunity to attract those type of travelers to come through, since we are an artery to go through the coast and to central California. So just a thought that I, this was shared during conversations that we did have with R C R C and in the purpose of this. I, I don't believe it was a target against the SEQA subject, but again, that's just something I want to share with you, that this is an opportunity to attract those travelers that have those electric vehicles, and it's an opportunity.
Yeah. And I understand that, and from a weird Sacramento point of view, that's fine. And again, they're using our authority, usurping our authority to get through what they want through. And yes, if, if I wave my hands and this county did away with SEQA, we would be booming. We'd be attracting all sorts of businesses. But the state sits down and puts their thumb on us on, on businesses that could help us, and then refuse, and then say, well, this is, this is important to me, so I'm going to do away with those environmental things. So we're not stopping it. They just have to go through the SEQA process, like everybody else does. As we, we've heard, millions of dollars going into, other businesses have to comply with SEQA. Why does, uh, why does the electrical charging station guy not have to do it? So if, if they want to remove and give the county the ability to do away with SEQA, I'm in.
I'd like to have to say that I I would love to see a lot more permitting applications expedited by removing SEQA guidelines, because it's ridiculous, and everyone knows I'm not a fan of SEQA. But I tend to agree with Supervisor Groves's position that it's extremely frustrating that the state gets to pick and choose what power they're going to usurp from the county, and when they're going to mandate that we enforce compliance with their, with their ideas. So it is, it's a, it's a tough pill to swallow. I don't and I, for the ability for people to charge their cars in Trinity County, I think it's there. And I don't think that we're saying that we're not going to allow char, charging stations. It's just, why do we need an ordinance that expedites this and expedites it at the cost of what is my biggest concern? Because we have how many planning projects that are stalled out in Trinity County, and if somebody gets to move the front of the line to put in a car charging station? I don't want to be the guy that explains that to one of my constituents who's been waiting for years and years and years for a lotline adjustment. So that, that's my biggest concern with this, is expediting something at the cost of others? I'm not, I'm not in favor. We have too much of a backlog already in the Planning Department of projects that should be moving forward to say, we're going to have an ordinance that expedites something that we don't have a pile of applications, I don't believe, at the Planning Department, the Building Department right now for this.
I guess I would say I'm fifty fifty on this. I understand exactly what Keith and Dan are saying. But it was brought to myself, Letty and Panos as somewhat of a way to increase tourism. Up here, we are the, the kind of the artery between Highway five and Highway one. And without having a charging station that will do multiple cars, right now they have the one in the holiday market that does Tesla only. So if you have any of the other cars out there that aren't Tesla, your chance of getting from Redding to the coast might be affected, and it might affect tourism here. Again, I, I agree with Dan and Keith about expediting things in front of things that are in line right now. So that's where I stand on that. It's a good idea. I think the places that we discussed to put them would help tourism. Here, people obviously have to stop for a half hour or so to, to charge their car. So if they were put in key places, they could shop or go to the river, whatever. So I'm torn on this.
I would just caution the board on repercussions if we do not follow the legislation. Again, you know, I, I totally understand what you're saying as far as the expediting aspect of it, but again, this is something that came through the Senate bill, so I just don't know what that repercussion would be if we did not follow. We would be the only county that would be not following this legislation, so.
Am I correct that we have until January of twenty-three to pass this?
Yeah, we have one more board meeting.
So we have, we could take two weeks to research unintended consequences? Because really, we're talking about two different things. I don't think we're really debating here whether or not we want car charging stations here. I think we're saying, is the state going to tell us what the order of priority is going to be for us to move forward with economic development? And I really agree. When you look at the history and you draw a straight line through those dots, it is offensive. However, we're not, and I hate saying this out loud, because I hate being controlled, but we're not necessarily in a position to take certain risks. I don't really know what, what that could mean. Margaret, how would we go about finding out what it might mean?
Well, we would have to reach out to the state and ask them. I doubt at this point whether they would be able or or it's like willing or able to give us a definite answer in terms of what, what ramifications it would be. I mean, most likely if we reach out to state, in honesty, they'll say, well, we have the ability to do this, this, this. And the question will be, are you intending to do that? And the answer would be, we don't know yet. So I, I would be very, very surprised if they, they said that they're not going to enforce their rights, but I would also be somewhat surprised if they took it upon themselves to make Trinity County an example. But again, we don't know. So we're happy to reach out to the state and happy to continue those conversations with them, wherein we articulate the board's concerns about how this was, for better terms, being shoved down our throats. But that's your pleasure. And again, I, I really can't tell you the risk, because I doubt they'll tell us what the risk is.
Because they don't, they don't know. They don't, they anticipate everybody just falling in line and, you know, using their template. But, you know, I look at this room, and we've got developers, and we've got, you know, all sorts of people in this room right today are affected by SEQA. And so I guess the, the question becomes, is this a hill to die on? Do we just lose a little bit more of our power? And does this, the state, the Politburo stand and, and say, you know, we will put in our charging stations and other developers, you know, that the state mandates it, and then other developers that may or may not choose to put them in on their own to make money. You know, we have a charging station in Douglas City that is free. And, you know, every once in a while I see a car there, well. But all I'm asking is they follow the same state law that every other developer has to follow. I'm not saying no, you're just saying, yeah, you're going to have to go out and do an ARC survey.
Can I make a competing motion?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'll make motion to approve the item as presented. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. Anyone care to second that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
All right. So would you like to, uh?
Not sure what else can be said. I just didn't want it to die. I want us to be able to have the opportunity to, to do either.
I mean, I think the, the bigger issue is a very large issue that, as Keith said, is it worth dying on that hill? It's a, it's more of a mountain, probably. And although I agree with the morality behind it and the intention, sometimes I think it's okay to support some of the we'll just call them progressive things that are happening either in the state or in the country. And, you know, to the point that there is only a Tesla charging station, makes me wonder, does Keith have Tesla stock? Just kidding. But to, to open it up for everybody in a way that, you know, it's more time efficient. Yeah, it's not fair to local Trinity County entities, residents, businesses, firms that are waiting to have projects approved. But if these did require SEQA analysis, that's just going to elongate all the processes entirely. And it'll, it'll bleed into the rest of that, that backlog anyways. So I don't think by, you know, by trying to prevent, by trying to force SEQA on this, it's not going to help any of our other issues that you're concerned about it affecting, you know?
Well, I gotta, I gotta say, the, the hill to die on argument is not one that I take that. I don't think we have to assume always that we die on the hill. Every once in a while, I think it would be good if we took the high ground. I think that there has to come a time when we at least reach out to the state and say, hey, where do you get the authority to take our power? As a county, we have very little authority to do anything anyway. And if we give up what we have to the state, let's give up land use authority. There's no reason we sit here on this board at some point, because we have no, there's no use. So I think that we need to at least make the effort to reach out to the state and say, where do you get this authority? You'd cite to me in the state constitution where you have the authority to mandate that we do this in a land use area. And I think that it's time that we make them prove it once and says, well, they're bigger, they have more people, they got the money, they can shut off our money. We have time to get their answer, and if they're, they have a good answer, okay, we can be compliant. And if they don't have that authority, then they can, for lack of better terms, they can pound sand. And it won't be the first time that I voted to tell the state to pound sand, and it's actually pretty fun. Because there is a time and place for them to just back off and let us have our authority.
Well, if that's the case, I'll, I'll support you, but I would suggest that you at least find some other counties to sign off on that same feeling. And I don't know if C S A C looked at this and wrote any letters or R C R C, but I'll be at R C R C tomorrow in Sacramento, so I can ask the group as a whole if any of the other counties, all rural ones, are doing the same pushback, or if they've all accepted as presented.
So Danny, do you want to turn that into a motion?
No, we have a motion that I'm perfectly fine with already on the table.
Two motions.
We have two motions on the table.
You do, but it almost seems like we could use a third one that gives some direction for what we're, how we're going to move forward. Somebody's got to take the lead. We can't just do nothing for two weeks and wait to see what happens. So maybe you want to sign yourself as a single ad hoc to look into your ramifications.
No, I would I would move that we ask county council to reach out to the state and ask them to explain where they get the authority to mandate that we do this when it's land use.
I, I'm happy to do so. So my recommendation also is to reach out to R C R C and, and Mr. Wileen and see if, if he has had any contact with them on this specific topic. Typically, he would have the, the legal, legal responses. And, and just for clarification, there, you know, there are kind of two different issues. There's the, the mandate, and then there's the, kind of the waiver of SEQA. The waiver of SEQA issue has been litigated, and actually, I just finished litigating it up in another county related to a closure of a prison where the state just decided, after getting sued for not complying with SEQA, they're just going to waive SEQA on the project. And so there, there is some case law that does give the state the authority to, which is why I said there's some, there's some, you know, some clauses in there. So that one, I'm, I'm pretty confident that, having gone up in the Court of Appeal, that they're going to be okay on that. But the, the mandate aspect to it has, I have not litigated that or seen that litigated. So I'm happy to push on specifically on that one as well.
The difference on that, that's a state facility. The state is mandating the county waive the county's authority on this.
Correct. I think it would still be, I think the county would still be the, yes, you're right, it is a state facility. So that probably does have a.
State's lead agency.
I was going to say, I believe, yes, the state would be the lead agency. So they're asking us, okay, I see the technicality, so we can push back on that as well.
All right, well, I make a motion that we have county council, reach out to the state, find out what their legal standing is for this. And then I would say we bring it back to the board the first, or do you think you could do that before the last meeting in December or just bring it back to first meeting in January?
Let's try for the last meeting in December and we'll see what happens. Because I think the first meeting in, yeah, I think last meeting in December is good.
My motion would be that council reaches out to the state and bring this item back on December twentieth.
I'll second.
All right, we have a full slate now. So are we fully discussed? All right.
Chandler, Ashley, you got this.
Okay, so the movement is to have council speak with the state to find out legal standing and bring it back to the meeting on twelve twenty.
Be my motion.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
No.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
All right. Moving onward. Got a long ways to go. Item four point, oh, this is grants department. Item four point two. Conduct a public hearing to discuss the completion of a community development block grant, public services project that constructed a fire apparatus structure at the Trinity Center Fire Department to house fire trucks and related equipment. No fiscal impact. Do we have?
Suzy Cochums.
Yes. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good morning, Frazier, Chairman Frazier and Supervisor Suzy Cochums, Division Director Grants and Housing. And I promise this item will be very short. This public hearing is set to gather information and input from the public with respect to a CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program Income Project that we started over two years ago. It recently finished and wrapped up. They haven't had their grand opening yet. They're probably going to do that in the spring after the winter snow melts. But this project was fully expended with program income funding at two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars. The project itself was a public services slash public facility project constructing a fire apparatus structure in Trinity Center. Trinity Center itself is a low to moderate income community, so they qualified for CDBG funding. They constructed this project very quickly, given COVID parameters. And now that it is wrapped up, we are required to garner public input on the project and its final closeout documents. So I'm here to gather any input from the board and the general public with respect to that process.
Any technical questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on item four point two?
I have no raised hands, no shouts.
All right, seeing none in the room, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
That's it, aren't we just doing a public hearing and that's?
So we don't, this requires no action. We had no public hearing, we will move on to item four point three. Once again, grants, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution authorizing an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments under the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CDBD program. No fiscal impact.
Again, Suzy Cochums, Division Director Grants and Housing. This item is much like the prior public hearing in that we need to garner public input on a CDBG project. This project was actually funded two years ago. This item was brought forth prior to that application for funding. But because two years have passed since the state approved the document and the application and subsequent contract, they asked us to recirculate for public input just to make sure that the public still supported the project. The project itself is a public facility project conducting ADA or ADA upgrades and improvements to the Human Response Network Office in Hayforks that mobility impaired persons can access services at that facility. So at this point, we need to garner citizen input on the progress so that we can move forward with that project. It is a requirement for CDBG to gather that citizen participation.
Any technical questions from the board? All right, with that, we will open the public hearing on item four point three. Do we have any public comment?
I have no shouts, no raised hands.
Seeing none in the room, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll move to adopt the resolution four point three as presented.
I will second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, item four point four. Conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning planning file P dash twenty dash twenty and P dash twenty-one dash thirty-three regarding APN zero two four dash five one O dash oh oh two in Weaverville area. One, adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Finding that on the basis of the whole record before the board, including the initial study and comments received, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have significant effect on the environment and that a mitigated negative declaration reflects the board's independent judgment and analysis. And two, adopt a resolution amending the Trinity County General Plan by reclassifying APN oh one four dash five one O dash oh oh two from single family residential low density to multifamily residential high density roughly point one four miles from state route two ninety-nine in the Weaverville community. And three, introduce, waive the reading and enact an ordinance amending Trinity County zoning ordinance by rezoning APN zero two four dash five one O dash oh oh two from single family residential to low density R one A to multifamily residential, high density R three. Plan review roughly point one four miles from state route two ninety-nine in the Weaverville community. Skylar, is this you again?
Thank you, Board Chair, Supervisors and members of the public in the audience. This is Skylar Fisher, Associate Planner with the Planning Department. And I'm going to speak to this item. In planning, we refer to it as P dash twenty dash twenty and P dash twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Skylar, excuse me a second.
Yeah.
Chair, since she's going to be through this out and we can have her sit up as staff member instead of having to give test.
That would be fine if you would like to. Do we have a microphone up there, though?
Because she will have to sit.
You're going to have to answer questions later too, probably, so.
Okay.
That would be a perfect idea. I was looking comfortable for a while, too.
Testing, oh.
Oh, yeah, you're good.
Go. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so the nice thing about once an item comes to the public presentation, rather than when I'm looking at it on my computer screen is I notice typos. So when you were reading the requested action, I just wanted to call out that in number three, the APN changes from beginning with oh two four to oh one four. It is all on the same APN of the oh two four, five one O, oh oh two. So I just wanted to catch that in the beginning. So a little bit of history on this project. The initial application was submitted in twenty twenty, which is the P twenty dash twenty. But then some things changed, so there was an additional application, P dash twenty-one thirty-three. So that's why we're trying to carry along both applications, so nothing kind of gets lost in the process of this project evolving. So the request is to rezone the parcel from single family residential low density to multifamily residential and to change the general plan designation from single family low, single family residential low density to multifamily residential high density. And through the review of this project and the comments that we received from the public in combination with there not being a building permit or a development plan submitted as part of the project. When planning staff took this to the Planning Commission in November of this year, it went with the recommendation of potentially having a plan review overlay being on the parcel. And this, there are different ways that a plan review can be utilized. But with this recommendation, it was to make it so that when development plans were submitted to the building department, that PR would be like, that would flag that there needs to be an additional look at the plans and then that they would get routed back to the Planning Commission. And so that would be limited to considerations regarding site layout, orientation of the location of the building, signs and other structures, landscaping and similar development features. And also considerations relating to traffic safety and traffic congestion, including the effect of the site development plan on traffic conditions. And finally, making sure that the development is consistent with the general plan and any other specific plans like the Weaverville Community Plan, for example. And so as was read, the Planning Commission recommended to the board that the environmental document, which was prepared and circulated at the State Clearing House, be adopted. So that was the initial study mitigated negative declaration with the MMRP, which is in the attachments for this item, which have some mitigations that were identified to reduce any potential impacts of the rezone to being less than significant. With that, they recommended the rezone and general plan amendment, the rezone, including that plan review overlay. And something that was brought to my attention was after the State Clearing House review of the environmental document, because there's like a thirty day period where we can receive comment from either like responsible agencies, so like state agencies typically, and members of the public because we also post that in the newspaper at the county clerk and we send it in the mail to the adjacent landowners. And shortly after, well, actually, a little bit after that review period had concluded and after we had noticed the project for Planning Commission, we received an additional comment from CDFW requesting more mitigations regarding invasive plant species on the property. So when planning brought it to the Planning Commission, we brought it with an amended mitigation regarding the new comments submitted by CDFW. And in the paper notice, Planning Commission decided that they weren't going to take the amended mitigation. They thought that the original mitigation was sufficient. But when we noticed in the paper, we accidentally said with instead of without. So currently, the recommendation is without the amended. It was bio one mitigation. And the conversation was around the mitigation measure included having to like pressure wash like all vehicles and equipment that go on and off the property during construction activities. And the commission believed that to be onerous on the property owner. So that's why they decided to recommend it to the board without that amended condition, but also keeping bio one as it originally was stated, which was, I have it here, prior to being brought and leaving from the property, any heavy equipment used to develop the property shall first be thoroughly washed and inspected in order to prevent introduction of new lead species. And the amended biom mitigation one, which is significantly longer, is within the discussion. But that's the difference between the two. So part of the review of these types of projects is planning likes to make sure that the rezone and general plan amendment is consistent with the sound principles of land use. And so through the drafting and review of the initial study mitigated negative declaration, it was found that potential impacts to the environment were properly evaluated and that the impacts of rezoning and amending the general plan designation would not be significant. In addition, as there was no development proposal, that's why planning and the Planning Commission recommend the plan review overlay. So if there's any concerns regarding location of any of the structures on the parcel or of traffic, then we can kind of go that extra step and say, okay, well, if we think it's, if we think it's necessary, we can kind of do a little bit of a review again at that Planning Commission level. Second, the project was found to be not injurious. So again, through review, through that environments review process, as well as reviewing the project through our local ordinance, it wasn't found that the rezone or general plan amendment would be harmful to the public health or safety or welfare. And finally, the plan consistency criteria. So this project site was actually discussed within the most recent update of the housing element. There was a different project that was initially going to go through that didn't end up going through, but it still was for multifamily residential. And I identified that this parcel was a good option for rezoning and amending the general plan designation for. So in that regards, planning finds it to be fairly consistent with the general plan and what was outlined in the housing element. And I also wanted to spend a little bit of time discussing some of the concerns that we have gotten either through the State Clearing House comment period or when we notified the neighbors again, when it was going to Planning Commission. And we got one comment afterwards, which all these comments are attached to this item. I think the largest concern that we've heard is of transportation impacts. And so through the creation and review of the environmental document, it wasn't found that there would be significant traffic impacts. But this project was routed both to our local DOT and Caltrans. And DOT didn't have a comment, but I kept following up with Caltrans. It's been a little bit of a bug because it connects to two ninety-nine. And they, I believe, would have gotten a copy of the environmental document since they're like a responsible agency. And they didn't respond to my initial email and they didn't respond to that. But I emailed them last week and I was like, hey, this is, I think, the last time you may be able to submit comments. So now is the time. And they emailed me back like one line. They're like, we do not expect significant traffic impacts. And that was like it. So I was like, okay, okay, I'll leave you alone now. And so in that regard, planning doesn't believe that there will be significant impacts through any development on the parcel for multifamily. But again, if there is that concern, we believe that the plan review can address that. I spoke with our land use consultants, SHN, about an easement concern because there was some discussion about how much of the property was actually developable due to easements. But when I spoke to him, he said that when he was performing his review, he didn't really see that to be an issue on development. Like there wasn't like so many easements that there was nowhere that they could put an apartment complex, for example. Another concern, and I kind of mentioned it twice because we had an initial comment and then after it went to the planning. And then after it went to the Planning Commission, we had somebody come in person. So there's like two separate runoff mentions. So part of, and this is like aside from the plan review, this is regardless of whether or not that would be put on the parcel. A drainage plan would be required for any building permits in the R three districts. So that would need to be reviewed and approved by county DOT. So we hope that this will address any runoff or drainage concerns. And those are the main concerns that I got on this parcel. I think something that has been like a very large discussion is the environmental document calls out this like 90 unit max development scenario. But that's taking within the ordinance, there's like, I brought my book and then I left it over there. There's like roughly like 2,000 square feet like per unit. So when the number of units was being developed, they took like the full square footage of the parcel and then they kind of calculated that 90 units. But there are other factors that go into, go in for consideration within the R three ordinance. For example, only, there's only 40% lot coverage allowed and you have to make room for parking spaces. So that maximum development scenario was just for the sake of the environmental document and making sure that we were evaluating all potential impacts and not like leaving any stone unturned and saying, and having somebody come and say, well, you only evaluate for this much, but this much could potentially happen, that type of thing. So in that regard, I think that that's good that we we went that route. Other than that, I recommend to the Board of Supervisors that you adopt the IS MND and the MMRP finding that on the basis of the whole record before the board, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant impact on the environment. And introduce, waive the reading of and enact an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning APN O two four five one oh 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 two from single family residential to multifamily residential with a plan review overlay. And adopt resolution amending the general plan by reclassifying that APN from single family residential to multifamily residential. Thank you. And I can answer any questions.
Anyone have any technical questions?
Sure. So the drainage plan would come into play. For example, there's the one comment about a small culvert across the road. That the drainage plan would actually not just stop on the property, but go deal with that culvert if it was inadequate at the time.
I would have to, personally, I haven't reviewed a drainage plan. That's like more DOT's territory. But my understanding is that it's not just, it's like any development on the property and how it could affect like any neighboring properties is like what's being analyzed there. Like it can't, there has to be proper drainage. It can't just be something that's like deferred off into like a culvert or something like that.
So you said that the ninety three is not a realistic number because of all the other issues. Do we have a realistic max number?
It would be very hard to say without like, like knowing how the space is going to be utilized and where the parking spaces are going to be and that sort of thing. Because I've, I know when I was kind of, when I was revisiting the staff report and preparing this item for you, I was playing around with the math a little bit. But I think with like all these different considerations of like landscaping and the parking and where the structures can actually be and whether or not there will be any accessory structures that won't be dedicated to like the residences themselves. It'd be very hard for me to give you like a concrete number. I know, I think for the housing element, the original projection, I think, was like somewhere between like 30 or 40 units is what they were talking about. But I don't think that was like thinking like maximum build out. But I'm not sure.
So would the plan review go in front of the PC or is that just stay with staff?
Currently, as recommended by the Planning Commission, it would go to the Planning Commission.
Because there was some worry by my commissioner that it wouldn't come back to that, but it will. So in the, in the traffic analysis, DOT didn't comment on the traffic, but what about pedestrian traffic? Is there any, was there any comments about the increase for pedestrian use?
There hasn't been any comments submitted by DOT in regards to pedestrian traffic or Caltrans. I know that in developing, like in an apartment complex, I know that there's like ADA considerations, which includes like sidewalks. But I know that unless like there's an agreement with the county, like there's like not really an expectation for the developer to like extend development outside of their project boundaries or like their parcel.
Because if I recall, and I didn't ride down the site, there's no sidewalks from there to two ninety nine.
I don't believe so.
That's my technical questions for now. Thank you.
Any others? All right. With that, we can open the public comment on item four point four. Right, yes, four point four. Do you have any public comment?
I have Ag.
Morning. Name is Bob Simmons. I have, my family has property just to the north of this proposed project. We have three parcels. One of our biggest concerns is the right of way to the one parcel is, which is actually landlocked. There is a deed at right of way on the parcel in question that Mr. Ryan owns. What our concern is, we want to maintain that right of way to get into that parcel. And I did, in my comments, and I don't know if you guys have that information, the background information that my brother wrote a letter. The drainage concerns, the traffic concerns. The high density is, in my mind, is ludicrous. I mean, that's just in a rural area, you're, you want to build an urban project in a rural area. Most of those parcels up there with a few exceptions are all three to five acres. And if people, we've had that property for 50 years. My parents bought it in order to get out of town. It's kind of, it's close to town, but it's not in town. It's, it's a rural setting. Most people live there, enjoy the, the freedom of having, you know, to go outside and do whatever they want. And I totally agree with that. But the right of way is a big issue. The, the topography on the, on the east end of the property in question is totally, 20% of the acreage is unusable. You just can't use it. It's too steep. You can't access it. One comment was that we could bring our road into our parcel from the top side, which is nuts. It's like this deep. There's no way. The front side is closer. It's only a couple hundred feet. And there's thirty three foot right away there, completely around the parcel. Not to mention utility easements that may or may not be effective. The comment that we made in our letter regarding traffic was primarily on a pedestrian side. With a compliance that big, you're going to have ADA concerns. You got people walking, kids walking. I mean, it's, there needs to be a sidewalk. Especially, I mean, for years and years, it hadn't been an issue because the traffic's not there. But this is going to have a huge impact on that. Also, the drainage plan, which Ms. Geiler mentioned, it's going to have an impact on people downstream. Right now, it's just all dirt. So the, the big percentage of the water is soaked in. There at the 12 inch culvert under the driveway that access one of our pieces that, and I used to work for the engineering of the county. It's not adequate. It wouldn't be with added asphalt and concrete. So that needs to be addressed. And in closing, I'd just like to say this. I'm, we're opposed to this as far as high density goes. I don't begrudge the owner building something down there that's more reasonable. But that just, what would you, well, how would you guys feel if it was in your backyard?
Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
I have a question for Mr. Simmons.
All right.
You mentioned the, the right of way, and then you mentioned a thirty foot, thirty three foot all the way around the property? Is that all the way around the property, your right of way?
The deed, the deed says around the perimeter or as nearest practical to the exterior boundaries. So it could be anywhere within the property, but it is, the deed says around the perimeter.
Okay, thank you.
All the way around.
You're saying?
The, the access to our, the property that's actually has a house on it goes through his property and we are utilizing that as a driveway. But that's within that thirty three foot easement. Which was there, been there for 50 years or better. When that property was subdivided in 1951 by the BLM, it was just a myriad of right of ways that they just threw in there for no particular reason. And the, the majority of the right of way on, on Mr. Ryan's property is, can be mitigated. I mean, it can be abandoned. It's not a problem. Our concern is getting to our parcel.
Thank you.
Good morning. Tim Saxon, Sheriff. I realize this is a zoning issue and it comes under the general plan. And number one, I think we all realize that we do need additional housing here in Trinity County, especially Weaverville. However, I would like to point out a couple of, of issues here. Number one, public safety. And I don't believe anybody has ever addressed the issue as we continue to approach these projects, especially a high density project such as this. I realize 90 issues is the outside of it and we're not going to go that high. However, emergency response issues have not been addressed, especially emergency response. Calls for service obviously are going to be increased. And there's been nothing to address the sheriff's office, animal control calls, which will probably be increased. Not to mention fire, Trinity County life support calls in that area. I would just like to point out that the board would need to understand that in the future, additional resources are going to have to be applied to increase the numbers of response personnel or funding to the fire departments or whatnot to handle that increase in calls for service. Because when you do build additional housing, you do put additional people into these communities, the calls for service are going to increase. I'll speak just for the sheriff's office right now, and you all know this. We are at the max right now. We are doing the best we'll in a condensed area. The calls for service go up. And I just want to put that on your radar right now. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Anna Marie Taylor and I live on Boudreaux, which is right off of Ransom. I understand the need for housing in this community. However, I have several concerns about changing it to a high density parcel. One of them is the amount of the apartments that are being proposed to be putting in. I read in the Trinity Journal Call article and on April 27th that Mr. Ryan stated that his intention was to put in a 70 unit complex and that the parcel in question was already adjacent to three other high density residential parcels, making it a good fit for the neighborhood. I highly disagree with this entire statement. I'm assuming he's been to our neighborhood, but I don't know of any three high density units there. We have the HRN transitional housing, which only has two buildings with two units each. And then there's the small apartment complex on the other side of Ransom that has six apartments. I'm not sure what the third one is he is referring to. At the planning meeting that I listened to on YouTube, unfortunately, I missed it. But they stated they wanted to keep the integrity of the neighborhood. But from where I'm standing, a 70 unit complex does not do that. Growing up, there was one parcel on, one house on that parcel, and that was neighborhood appropriate. I'm very concerned about the amount of traffic, both vehicle and pedestrian. I don't know why Caltrans or DOT doesn't think it might be a problem, but with 70 units, that is definitely going to be a problem. We don't have sidewalks. Even the little traffic that we have now is sometimes an issue. I don't think there's enough space for all the parking. I mean, if you think 70 apartments, what, two spaces each, even one guest parking, there's just not enough room. If he wants to improve the community, which is what I read, I would suggest cutting down the units. Maybe like 12 apartments would be a little more appropriate for the neighborhood. I submitted these concerns as well as a few others to the Planning Commission and I felt like they were quickly dismissed. So I encourage you to take another look and not let a high density complex be in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Eric Hayes, Weaverville. I got a couple of comments in favor of the project. I agree that you should adopt the mitigation or the, the environmental documents as provided. But I would suggest taking a second look at the ability of the Planning Commission to have the planning overlay as it's already going to be reviewed by the staff and DOT and building department. And just those processes alone are going to take substantial time for review and slowing this project down. The Planning Commission review will just further slow that down with how infrequent they meet and how long it takes for discussion. So that's how I feel on that portion. In regards to Tim Saxon's concern, I would suggest that the increased tax value of that parcel is going to substantially offset the county's revenue towards providing funding to those departments. And I think, oh, I have one question. Is the, the owner going to get to speak on, on this too, or does he have to do it during public comment?
Yeah, I think either, are you representing him?
Currently, as I speak, no.
Okay, well, I was, if, if you was his representative or if he himself wants to speak, I, I would allow more than three minutes. As long as we don't get too far.
I got it. With that, I'll yield to the public.
Good morning, Gordon. My name is Dana Ryan and I am the developer. On the question as far as the amount of apartments, I've talked with Skylar in regards to my conversation with Kim Hunter. And she said with the general plan or before that, that they were going to change the height from 25 to 45. And that's how we're coming up with our numbers. I didn't make those numbers up. That's where that, that math is coming from. And so if I can, am I asking the right question, Skylar? Is that still possible as you as the planner? That that height is going to be changed, not because of my project, but overall?
So what's being referred to is either a policy or program identified in the most recent update to the housing element, which is to reevaluate the current height limitation in the R three district because it is currently at, I believe, 25 feet. So that's like the maximum height allowed for apartments in the county. So based on my current evaluations of like the square footage by unit and then calculating that compared to the allowable lot coverage and the square footage of the parcel as a whole, I've kind of gotten a back and forth in the office on like, does square footage count like stacking? Or is it just like square footage, like in total? But regardless, that is something that the planning department is looking at so that we wouldn't require the applicant to like get a variance from that requirement since the county is already committed to reevaluating that. So that could impact, again, what the number of So that could impact again what the number of parcels or the number of units, excuse me, that could be possible on that parcel.
Thank you. On the easements for the Simmons property, I may I say that there is a thirty three easement that goes around the whole property. And there is still room if they want to improve where the drainage existing is or to access their property that they're speaking through their other parcel that they have. We're not trying to squeeze anybody out and that easement does come from the top side up where HRN is and comes from the bottom side as well. If they care to use the part that's down on my property, they would just have to do some riprap work or roadwork to be able to get in through that easement, which I'm not against. Seems easier to go through their existing property to get to it. That's there now, which would make them not landlocked. Before Rick Tippett left, we really stressed to him about any type of traffic studies. We have it in print from him that no traffic study was was advised or mandated. And I've talked to Rick since. He's moved on to his other jobs and he's happy to stand in front of a board or repeat that, but we do have it on paper. As far as the engineer, he didn't stand up as saying that, but that's who Mr. Keys is behind me that spoke before me. We did look into any of the nauseous weeds that they're saying spray our proper our equipment off before we left. And I think that's where on the planning board they asked to nix that. Then number C to have the planning department, planning board review it again. I'm kind of bouncing off with Mr. Grove said Sequa is ran us where I've lost a grocery store in this town where I tried to put in and really probably has cost me this project as well. I'm trying to get it rezoned and I'm not sure I'll be able to be the developer of it. I've lost my twenty million dollar financing and the contractor because it's taken over five years to do this. I've been stated from the previous planners that I'm put behind pot. The pot subjects, you'll have to stand behind that. And then we had COVID step in too. So I'm really just trying to create housing. If anybody has a suggestion of where we can put something like this, I've looked for years. And the the opportunity to have this mass of land is obvious. It's not around everywhere. The county has tried to buy it. The state's tried to buy it, at least the ones that represent Susie Cockums and that crew. So they realize as well, we need housing. Would I go in if I'm able to develop it and put immediately ninety apartments? That's not financially feasible. It would probably be done in increments and sections. As far as the draining, the drainage of the project, that that is pretty much stated again with building. Building's going to set the setbacks, the amount of square footage that I can cover. They do that. So I'm asking to nix where it goes back in from the planning board and delays the project more when we already have the governmental oversight by the building department as far as how much square footage you can take of the land that next to the county, my property lines, any of that stuff. So I I don't think it's necessary to go back through them, the planning board and have them review it again after we spent a lot of time with Sequa and planning to get to where we're at. Can I ask any questions? Thank you for considering it and thank you, Skylar. It's been really helpful coming at the end of this project and keeping the ball really rolling. So thank you.
I've got a question, but I don't know if it's for you or not. And it's about the the vehicle trips. Who should I direct that question to? Who am I asking?
That would probably be Skylar or DOT that would be in charge of traffic study.
Okay. And my question, it says, you know, in the initial study, it's referenced to end up as ninety units. The daily trips are estimated at four hundred and ninety. And then AM, it says thirty two trips and PM it says forty trips. I'm curious what happened to the other four hundred and twenty trips that day per day.
Right at noon.
Right.
I I believe that those are like the peak hour trips are going to be like that many in the morning and that many in the evening. I didn't develop the VMT model for this, so I can definitely look closer at it and get back to you if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, the math just doesn't add up really for that one.
One last comment on my part, that the state is revising parking as well. They're they're downsizing parking. I haven't got into that completely, but I believe the engineer has and they're reducing the required parking, I believe, from two spaces to one. Thank you for your time.
A follow up question for Skylar, if I could. Considering Supervisor Brown's question to you, are you still comfortable with that four hundred and ninety number? We just don't know how to quite break it down? Or do you think it might be inaccurate?
I know that the traffic analysis or that section in the MND was something that was like a bit of a back and forth between the applicant's consultant who initially prepared it and SHN who reviewed it and revised it. And so when we got to a point where they were like comfortable with it, I know that they said like, okay, we're at a point where we're comfortable with this and we feel like it's accurate. So I don't have the full document in front of me, so I can't speak to it. So I mean, if that's something that, you know, it's like, okay, staff, go back, take another look at this and come back to us. I'm fine with that.
I mean, my concern comes out of, you know, if there are ninety individuals, two bedroom apartments, depending on if it's a family or a group of people or whatever, you could have two cars every day leaving. I mean, it says four hundred and ninety, which is is more than that. But when you have people commuting to work up and down the access there, if you've got ninety cars all headed out to get to to work at, you know, one time or a couple of different times. I think that is a significant amount of traffic increasing on a small, what I perceive as a small road. So I do have some concerns about that and I would like some clarification on the the traffic math before I'm comfortable moving forward.
We have more public comment on Zoom.
Ag.
Oh, good afternoon, Chairman and Supervisors. This is Abby Goodyear from Weaverville. I'm a property owner in the Ransom Road neighborhood and I'm speaking for myself and on behalf of multiple Ransom Road neighborhood property owners who couldn't attend this meeting today. We support affordable housing in Trinity County and welcome appropriate development neighborhoods to reach the county's housing goals. But we also believe that a multitude of factors must be considered before allowing zoning changes without a development project attached to occur. All housing development projects in Trinity County must consider public safety, public health, public works infrastructure, wildlife, human interface mitigation, fire danger, neighborhood character and affordability to future tenants, including low income disabled and elderly populations. We believe that the rezone for one six one Ransom Road is inappropriate for a number of reasons listed above. Most notably, public health and safety, along with the lack of public works infrastructure in the Ransom Road area. It is in a high fire danger zone, according to Cal Fire, and only one way in and one way out. We have no streetlights, no sidewalks. We don't have a safe bus stop for the children already living here. We have issues with nuisance wildlife, most notably bears getting into trash. And at the current apartment complex, the trash does not get cleaned up by tenants or the landlord for days and sometimes weeks at a time. We deal with increased thefts since the other parcel was rezoned as multifamily transitional housing and cars parked on the road, literally in the lane, impeding traffic. Schools and playgrounds are over a mile away and without sidewalks, this would make walking to schools or parks dangerous for kids and would also encourage trespassing on private property that we already have an issue with during with the current neighborhood population and transient activity here. When this parcel was identified from counties by county staff as appropriate for multifamily development, it was not noticed for nor was it input sought from anyone in the neighborhood. The idea was to allow for nonprofit RCHTC to buy and build low income affordable housing in line with SB ten. There are better properties for this and they're already zoned appropriately. So that's not what this rezone application is. This is a private citizen trying to increase his property value at the expense of property values of the neighboring properties. The applicant already owns a parcel that is zoned multifamily high density across the street from this parcel. Why isn't that parcel being developed if housing is the true goal? How come the Swiss village that was just mentioned isn't being redeveloped after housing units were burned down to make way for a retail store that never materialized? How come this neighborhood is being singled out to support the entire housing need for the county? We only have a mandate to create two units to meet the state requirements, as that was reported at the planning commission meeting. And our neighborhood was listed as low density in the updated housing element that goes through twenty twenty four. Why is the housing element being disregarded even though it was updated in twenty nineteen? The county should not approve a major rezone in a neighborhood designated as low density in the updated housing element, especially when doing so it significantly changed the overall safety and character of the neighborhood, which is historically single family homes with many owner occupied rural residential parcels that take advantage of the current zoning regulations allowing for farming and keeping up livestock, including roosters. A few parcels of this area are already zoned for multifamily housing, are appropriate for multifamily housing development and would be welcomed by neighborhood residents. But the density proposed on this parcel goes far beyond was appropriate for area infrastructure and it would not be safe or wise decision to allow a rezone at this time. The application has stated multiple times at meetings how much money and time he's already spent as evidence this should be approved now, but let's apply the same thinking as this that we did to cannabis development. Let's do it right and not fast.
Your your time's up. Thank you.
Do we have others on Zoom?
Scott White.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Scott White-Lewis. And it's interesting to hear you talk about a backlog of projects. I was at the meeting where this item was heard. I listened to Dana tell the planning commission how much time and money the county has cost him. On November first, I spoke to you about problems created by lack of qualified leadership and planning and suggested you inquire of developers to county residents about this. Dana's project is an excellent example. Supervisor Grove's question about maximum number of units is very real. Bob Simmons' question about the easement is very real. At the planning commission meeting, staff stated they had addressed all four comments received. A commissioner pointed out that he could only find where three items were addressed. Staff's response was, oh. The commissioner then asked how the easements brought up in the comment letter would affect development of Dana's parcel. From the comment letters that the county received, it sounds like those impacts can be very significant. But staff's response was, I would have to look into that to find out. I have to haunt the county if it was not for the issue of plan review overlay, which they didn't even mention the easements in that. That is the only chance the county is going to have to catch the mistakes that have been made in this project to date. And I always tell all the elected officials, don't take my word for what I'm saying. Go back to the audio and video recording of that meeting and look at what actually happened to see if what I'm telling you is what actually happened, because it is. So we need a leader in planning and I ask you, don't take out on Dana the failures of the county to do the job it needs to do. But I ask you, go ahead and act on the project for Dana because of all the time and effort that's happened. But then please, as I I implored you to do on November first, go out and look at what's going on in the county. Look at the effect of lack of leadership and planning is having on all of us. And please do something about it. This is an example of exactly what the cost to our county is of poor leadership. And without leadership, the general plan won't mean anything. Thank you.
I used to work for Herwood Engineering and we did survey that that area up there was a BLM subdivision that went from behind tops, well, actually behind the Golden Age Center clear down to the other in a town. And the parcels have a thirty foot right away on all on both sides. So it's actually a sixty foot right away. The center line of the property was the the property line was the center line of the roads. So there is there is a a map from the subdivisions that back in the forties and fifties that you guys need to find. And we we had to redesign a road system up past Joe Cox's property because the roads didn't work with the with the property's shape of property. So, I mean, it's something that needs to be brought up and looked at, but, you know, so there is there is right aways around all that property up there you need to deal with.
Any other public comment?
I have no chat, no raised hands.
We will close public comment and bring it back to the board.
I have a question for Skylar. So Bordeaux Road that doesn't have, that's only one. Oh, I'm sorry. Bordeaux Road only has one, one in 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 and out. There's no way out of the backside of that.
That sounds accurate, but.
Were were any of the considerations that there's only one one way in, one way out during fire, was that brought forward in this work or is that to be caught at the at the planning commission plan review?
So specifically to like wildfire safety or?
Yes. So so this the fire, the fire road, fire safe roads and all that is is this compliant with just the one exit?
So safety is an aspect of the environmental document that is considered, but I would have to spend some time to see if it specifically addresses that concern, but the I I won't, I want to say yes, but I would have to verify.
Skylar, I have a concern also with having ninety units there. And there probably be more than one person per unit and one stall per unit. Is that correct? One parking stall?
I believe it's two per unit.
Two parking stalls per unit? So we may have one hundred and eighty people exiting in the in the morning and coming back in the evening. If they all.
Is that the concern?
Well, mostly we have, you know, two family, you know, both persons in the family who work. So I'd imagine that generally, most of the cars would leave during the morning, come back during the afternoon, which would be a total of three sixty plus possibly coming back for lunch, whatever. So over four hundred trips per day in that in that area. Does that number trigger any traffic concerns, any safety concerns?
So that number was evaluated within the environmental document, but there wasn't outside of that scoping, there wasn't additional traffic studies because when the project was originally started, it was found that there wasn't need for a traffic study.
Would this trigger a need for a traffic study?
I want to say if that's the direction of the board to keep this project moving forward.
Okay. And I thought I heard somewhere one stall. Did?
I can, I can go grab my book.
Mr. Ryan said that the state is talking about reducing the requirement from two to one, but I think that that would be.
So that's what I thought I heard. So that leaves me with this question. Where do we park the other ninety cars?
Well, I'm I when when Skylar gets back, I would like to actually make have some questions that might clear some of this up too. So Skylar, my question with this is the way I read this, we are, we're rezoning this property. We're not approving a project going forward. So if Mr. Ryan or any other developer proposes a development on this cross property, it's all going to have to go through the review process anyway, correct?
Yes.
So if at the point if he proposed, okay, we're going to put in a ninety unit development, it has to go through all the environmental doc, the environmental documents and all that for the development, correct?
Yes.
So to me, the the questions that were they're bringing being raised about traffic studies and about these other issues would be for in the future when we actually have a project that we can look at because we can't address concerns that don't exist. There's no project.
So something I wanted to add, though, was that generally for building permits, they're exempt. There are like certain criteria, like if staff There are like certain criteria, like if staff determines that there needs to be further evaluation or studies presented, that can happen. But, um, the reason why the maximum, that like maximum build out scenario was discussed in the environmental document is because the apartment complex is a principally permitted use, so by right in the district. So it wouldn't be caught through the use permit process. There would need to be a determination by planning. Um, when that building permit was submitted, that there needs to be a traffic study or there needs to be some other form of document prepared, um, prior to planning sign off on that permit. So that's kind of why, um, the planning commission recommended a planning review overlay be put on the parcel to kind of have that additional step to say, okay, um, with, because I've seen, I, most of the rezone projects I've seen are with the development permit. So that's, that's kind of like, okay, so we're agreeing to this, but also we know that this is the project that's going forward. And so, um, we're assuming that there's going to be an apartment complex, um, on this parcel. So we're trying to, um, evaluate all the potential impacts of that. But because we don't know the specifics, it's kind of what creates the trickiness, I guess.
So thus why the plan review?
Yes.
And so Supervisor Frazier's point being that any further actions will have to go through plan review.
Yes. So the plan review, um, would make so if a building permit were to be submitted, it would go to the planning commission.
So in theory, that he could propose 60 units and at that point, it could be found out that, that traffic was an issue. Or for a fire safe was an issue. And then he could be cut down at that point?
Yes. But, um, if it were determined, you know, at this point that, um, you felt that you couldn't, um, adopt the environmental document as is, or if you wanted more, like me to do more research to clarify some of your questions. I mean, it's always an option to continue it. So you feel more comfortable?
Anyone have any further technical questions for staff or? Like?
This is your district, right, Joe?
Indeed it is.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Well, um, I think the planning department did a, or planning commission did a pretty good job and please quote me on that to the commission because I rarely say that, at least recently. We have, we do have the protection. There seems to be, to me, to be a lot of issues with this. But these are all issues that could be mitigated during the plan review to the, uh, so with that, I would, uh, move to have 4.4 adopted as presented.
I'm going to second that.
All right. We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Grove?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Hi.
Chairman Frazier?
Hi.
Oh yeah, you can do the next one.
All right. Item 4.5, conduct to public hearings. You consider taking the following actions concerning the planning file RN 22-01 regarding APN 018-210-016 in the Mad River area. Find the project to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15061B3 and adopt a resolution approving the proposed road names Homestead Way and Triple R Lane within the Mad River community. No fiscal impact.
Should I move back to the podium?
No, you're fine right there.
We reserve that spot for important people like yourself.
You, um, board chair, supervisors, um, and members of the public. Um, my name is Skylar Fisher. I'm an associate planner with the planning department. And I am going to, um, discuss, um, a road naming application that we got RN 22-01. So, um, this was an interesting one. This is the first, um, road name application that the planning department has processed in a while. Um, it is for, um, parcel map application P 1122. And that project, um, is in the, it's, hopefully we're going to be able to finish that project up this week. Um, and one of the last things that they need to do is to get the proposed road names, um, for the subdivision, um, approved. And so, um, currently, so some background on the project, um, as described by Chair Frazier, this is a, um, parcel becoming three parcels. Um, and so the tentative map was approved a few years ago and has been, um, processing for a while, um, due to, um, the COVID pandemic, um, and some, um, state legislative extensions as well as some extensions granted by the planning commission. And so, um, part, one of the conditions on the map, which can be seen in SRC Resolution 2012-02, which, um, approved the tentative map application, is that, um, any road names shall be submitted to the planning department for approval in accordance with Title 12. So that's specifically chapter 12.17 in our Code of Ordinances. And, um, that chapter, um, outlines that for any, um, road names or road renaming, um, needs to be by board resolution. So, um, what I did is I routed this application with the two road names for the roads, um, that can be found in exhibit A um, for your proposed resolution. I routed these to, um, the Department of Transportation, Office of Emergency Services, the Ruth Lake Community Services District as this parcel falls, um, within the district and the sheriff's office. And this is to make sure there aren't, we're not creating any duplicate road names. And also there's not going to be any concerns, um, for, like, if there's like an emergency, um, so those road names existing in their system or anything like that. And, um, to date, I've gotten no comments of concern. Um, the only comment that I got other than no comment was by, um, the Office of Emergency Services where they said, well, we do have a homestead road, but that's not a problem. Homestead Way should be fine. So, um, we feel pretty confident, um, in these road names and, um, suggesting them to you for approval. Um, and there have also been two letters of support, um, from the neighbors that access one of the roads. Um, per that chapter I referenced earlier, um, it states that there doesn't need to be public notice of the road names if there's at least 60% agreement, um, on everyone serviced by the roads. So since we have comments, um, from those two neighbors and the applicant is also in support of the road names, um, we have, um, I believe total support, um, for these road names. So all of that being said, um, the planning department, uh, recommends that the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, um, adopt a resolution to approve the proposed road names Homestead Way and Triple R Lane, as described in the, uh, draft resolution.
All right. Do we have any public comment on item 4.5?
I have no chats and no raised hand.
All right. Seeing none in the room. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'll move to adopt 4.5.
Oh, second.
And my comment is there's got to be an easier way to change names in a road.
So just naming them for the first time?
I know, but still, this is a lot of effort by the county to change names.
Everything on this project's been.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll stop whining.
All right. Um, any further, further discussion? All right. Go ahead.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Supervisor Grove?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Hi.
Chairman Frazier?
Hi.
All right. Now, before we move into county matters, we're going to have to take a break. So does the board, will we take a actual lunch break or do we want to make it shorter and?
I'm being ordered by the boss that it should be a lunch break.
All right. I know that there's, there's been people waiting here forever for our next item. Makes it difficult, but, uh,
We get it.
Been waiting for six years, so.
Um, so if, if we're going to take a lunch break, I would say, well, let's reconvene at two o'clock. Uh, let's make it even numbers. You'll be back in 45 minutes. Maybe we'll see you at two. All right. So we'll, we'll come back at two. Sorry, guys.